Okay. I'd like to recall to an order the Clayton City Council meeting for January 15, 2019. Let the record reflect that all council members are present. If everyone would please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. So our first item is the consent calendar. If there are no requests to remove anything from the consent, I would be looking for a motion.
I would move approval of the consent calendar.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And no one opposed, so that passes unanimously. Our next item is item six, recognitions and presentation. We do not have any today. We move on to our reports. We don't have a planning commission report today. We also don't have a trails and landscaping committee report, so we'll move on to city manager and staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Catalano. In the interest of the larger attendance tonight, I'll just forego that. Thank you.
Okay, great. So then we'll go on to city council reports. We'll start with council member one, please.
I have no report at this time.
Okay. Vice Mayor Pierce?
Yes, I'll try to be quick. We had several meetings of the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, both in late December and early January, met with the Executive Director Steering Committee several times. We're in the process of hiring a new executive director for the Metropolitan Transportation Commission and the Association of Bay Area Governments. That process is nearly finished, and there will be a press release before too long. Also had a meeting of the Regional Planning Committee of the Association of Bay Area Governments in San Francisco, where we discussed the Committee to House the Bay Area. Lots of talk about housing opportunities and challenges, and how we might go about that as a region. And attended the mayor's conference in Richmond. It was also on the day of the ferry opening for the Richmond ferry to San Francisco. And so we had a presentation on that and a brief presentation on the CASA process as well. That was it.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Wolf?
Oh, for me, yes. On January 7th, I met with the barbecue cook-off committee. Going to be the announcer for that again this year. On the 9th, attended the Contra Costa Water District Operations and Engineering Meeting, which was very exciting. I've learned more about water than you can imagine. But there were some public emails that I received, or people emailed me regarding the addition of chlorine smell in their water, and I wanted to bring that up with them. And they assured us that the water is safe, that it's within the proper levels. However, at this time of year, with the water use being lower, with people not watering their lawns and whatnot, they have to add more chlorine to the water because it sits for a longer amount of time. And they'll be flushing that out soon, and that should dissipate. On the 10th, I met with a group in Peacock Creek regarding hazardous preparedness, and they'll be bringing some presentation to the city council soon with regard to this. Living in an area of earthquakes and heightened fire danger, they're concerned about evacuations, and so they're going to be bringing that to our attention. Also met with the, on the 14th, with the Oktoberfest Committee, of which I'm going to co-chair this year, and help them out with that. And I think, aside from today, that's it.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Diaz?
Since our last meeting, I've attended two Contra Costa Water District Board meetings, and I shared with all of you their proposals for 2019, which includes fee increases. So stand by for that. Although we're no longer in a drought because of the less amount of water, they had to raise the price to keep everything in order. On the 3rd of January, I was honored with an appointment by the President of the League of California Cities. I'm going to be a member now of the League's Environmental Committee. We have our first meeting of the year on Thursday in Sacramento, so I'll be there attending that. New committee for me, but it'll be very interesting. On the 4th, we took down all of the Christmas decorations on downtown, so in case you wonder what happened, they're back in storage, getting ready for next year. On the 11th, last Friday, I met for an extended period of time with the Contra Costa County Realignment and Justice Group. That is the group that's overseeing the so-called parolee individuals being reassigned throughout Contra Costa County. We mapped out a program that will hopefully inform not only the city council, but the general public regarding that issue. In fact, they have offered and will schedule it sometime in February or March. They will come before one of the city council meetings and give us a complete breakdown on that process. In addition, they are going to support me at least two community outreach meetings for, in the affected areas, and we'll be scheduling those as well. Finally, yesterday, and I suspect that's why the majority of the community is here, I provided an interview with KPX Channel 5, John Ramos. And what was interesting about that, we spent 10 to 15 minutes talking, and it was on the air for 10 seconds. So they really took a lot of the information that I was talking to them about. But anyway, that's it for me.
Great, thank you. And then for me, I also attended on January 10th, the mayor's conference in Richmond. And as our vice mayor mentioned, the topic that was discussed was actually the ferry service and water transit in general in the Bay Area, given that the San Francisco-Richmond ferry had opened that day. And there was a presentation by Peter Engel, who is from CCTA, which is the Contra Costa Transportation Authority. But what's, I think, very interesting, we don't live in Clayton particularly clear the water, but what is very interesting aspect to water transit, and something I think that the Bay Area Council has studied quite a bit as well, is also its usefulness in terms of emergencies. If we have an earthquake in the Bay Area and we no longer have BART available, that, you know, what is the potential ferries and water transit could provide? Then I also, similarly to councilmember Diaz, I also was appointed to the California League of Cities to one of their policy committees, not to the same committee. I'm going to be serving on the Transportation, Communication, and Public Works Policy Committee. They are going to be meeting in Sacramento this Friday. And the purpose of those policy committees is essentially to review pending state bills that are coming out of Sacramento, and then within that policy, to review them and make potential recommendations to the Board of the California League of Cities that then attempts to impact legislation that is pending in Sacramento. And then lastly, I just want to make one other announcement. Something that I'm going to try to do this year as the mayor is I'm going to hold some office hours here and there, so I wanted to just mention the first two that I have scheduled, which is going to be this Saturday from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. So obviously, it's, you know, it's in the weekend, but 9:00 to 11:00, and I'm going to be essentially just hanging out near downtown, near a couple Joes, and welcome any citizen to come, just chat or say hi. And then my second office hours, the next one, will be on Friday, January 25th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., and that is going to be at the City Hall at the third floor office area there. But this Saturday, 9:00 to 11:00 will be my first office hours. So that, I think, concludes our internal reports. We do not have any other reports today, so we move on to item eight, which is public comment. And we do have a lot of speaker cards for an item that's on the agenda, but the public comment portion is for opportunity for any member of the public to speak on any item that's not on today's agenda. So I do have two speaker cards, and I'll ask them, and if anyone else would like to speak, I welcome them as well. First, I have Marcy Longchamps. And each public speaker will have three minutes, and it should be on a non-agenda item at this point. And then I also have Maggie Eraglio right after that.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
By way of reintroduction, my name is Marcy Longchamps, and this is my partner, John Krancy. We reside on Coyote Circle and have lived there for 27 years. My issue tonight concerns the park on Coyote Circle, directly across from our home. Let me preface this by saying that I am fully aware that the city council and the city staff have legal requirements regarding Assembly Bill 109. I get that. But I am afraid you are going to have to come up with another place to satisfy your state, county, and city requirements. Coyote Circle has a park, and we don't want to be treated any differently than any other area of Clayton. We may live in multi-density condominiums. We may live further away from the downtown area, but we are still citizens of Clayton, are we not? In my opinion, this never should have happened in the first place. The city did not do their due diligence, then panicked, and in their rush to do something, came up with a plan that eliminated most areas of Clayton. However, they made one huge mistake. They didn't consider the park on Coyote Circle. We have a park, just like all the other parks in Clayton. We are not merely a bench and some grass. Our park has a basketball court, a volleyball court, and a grassy area for picnics and play. There are children playing there every single day. Now, this summer, I was told by Jim Diaz that there was to be a discussion about our park 30 days after the parolee housing ordinance was approved and in effect. That would have been October 4th. It has been almost four months. Any looking into or research should have been completed well before this. And until tonight, there has not been one thing on the city council agenda regarding this issue. Isn't it about time that this matter be brought to light and be finally resolved? A park is a park is a park. Children are children, and our children on Coyote Circle are equally entitled to the safety and protection from convicted felons, as is everyone else. Please do not continue to throw us under the bus based solely on our address. You know, every month, you hand out awards to students for doing the right thing. Now it's your turn. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And then I also have Maggie Eraglio. It's on the agenda item. Okay. So then, is there anyone else who would like to address the council and general comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. We'll move on to our public hearings, which we have none, which leads us to our action items, and we have several of them. Our first action item is item 10A, which is the consideration of a second reading and adoption of ordinance number 484 amending Clayton Municipal Code Section 17.92 regarding inclusionary housing requirements for the purpose of incorporating rental housing projects into this local housing requirement. If we could start by having a report from our community development director, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. This item on the agenda--
Is the consideration of a second reading and adoption of ordinance number 484. The subject ordinance was introduced during the city council's last meeting on December 18th. The ordinance proposes to incorporate rental housing projects into the city's inclusionary housing requirements for any new development projects of 10 or more units as allowed for by AB 1505. At the December 18th meeting, the city council requested three revisions to the ordinance. The first revision was to provide clarifying language to ensure individual, single-family property owners would be exempt from the implementation of this ordinance if a residential property was damaged or destroyed by 50% or more of its reasonable market value. Further, the proposed language modifications clarify the application of the ordinance on qualifying destroyed or damaged residential development projects will be dictated by the original project approval date. The second revision was to require inclusionary units to be completed prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy. And the third and last revision deleted the language allowing a buy-right option of payment of the in-lu fee for projects comprised of 10 units, therefore giving the city council full discretion to determine the instrument to satisfy the inclusionary housing requirements. All of the requested revisions have been made and are reflected in the attached ordinance. Therefore, it's recommended the city council motion to have a second reading of ordinance number 484 by title and number only, and waive further reading and motion to adopt ordinance number 484. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Great. Are there any questions from the council?
I have one question.
Okay.
On the first proposed revision of Section 1792.020 on applicability, Section C, the first sentence that was supposed to enact this change, I think, is incomplete, is the after the first comma, where it says, "Any residential development of 10 or more units which is damaged or destroyed by fire or natural catastrophe shall be subject to the inclusionary housing requirements and effect at the time a residential development was originally approved." Comma, is that supposed to be an or or an and after that comma?
After the, was originally approved?
Yes.
It's supposed to be so as long as the use of the reconstructed building, a number of dwelling units remains the same?
And then the second clause says, "The cost of such rehabilitation constitutes no more," maybe that's, I think that's the comma I was referring to. So it says, "As long as the number of units remain the same, comma, the cost of such rehabilitation constitutes no more than 50%." I just think that is unclear. It seems to me that should read as an and. Do both conditions need to be met, or just one?
Yeah, I think it would be an and, yeah.
Okay. So to clarify, I think--
So we can just, we can give it that direction?
Yeah. After the section that says, "Units remain the same, comma," there should be an and included to join this, to join the phrase?
Or delete the comma?
Yeah, then that's fine, too. That was my only question.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, seeing none, we will open this up for public comment. I do not have any speaker cards for this item, but if anyone would like to address the council, please step forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comments, so we'll bring it back to the council for any discussion. Go ahead.
Yeah, I would just like to thank staff for making those changes. I think the changes to the language help to clarify quite a bit. Certainly the one that we were just talking about regarding damage to the building. I think the most important is that the completion of the inclusionary units is before the first occupancy of the remainder of the units, and adding that discretion so that the council can determine whether the units will be built on site or allow an in-lu fee. I think that really is very helpful for this. And I'm very pleased that we are making rental units and for-sale units on par with each other, so that it doesn't favor one or the other in cost for a developer, so that whichever kind of unit would be proposed, that we do get some affordability units out of it. So when we are ready, I'm more than happy to make the motion.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I think, you know, previously, we had discussion about whether or not including the non-owner-occupied units would actually encourage that type of development versus owner-occupied. I think in simplified terms, this may be true, but there are larger factors that enter into that calculus. Whether a developer will opt for owner-occupied units versus non-owner-occupied units has a lot more to do with the cash flows, and whether a developer has the capital to retain the property and is seeking an income stream versus whether they need the return on capital more quickly from the eventual sales. I think the inclusionary housing requirement, whether it is there or not, is a factor, but I think that it would, I would be hard pressed to say that that would flip the calculus one way or the other over and above the cash flow interests. You know, for inclusionary housing, for that to happen, we would need to make a lot more assumptions, and I don't think that, that there would be evidence, at least at this point, without more specifics, to say that that decision would be flipped. It could, but I think it's unlikely, given the magnitude of the investment that developers will make in units over 10 that this would apply to. But I think what isn't based on assumptions is that by placing inclusionary housing requirements of these non-owner-occupied units, we would be encouraging developers to take advantage of the California density law. Because the inclusionary housing units would satisfy the requirements for density under the density law, then essentially, there would be, this would incent developers to take advantage of that density law. And so by doing this, I think the council would be encouraging density in rental units, because they would automatically be able to satisfy the requirements by satisfying what is required under the inclusionary housing. And so for that reason, I continue to be opposed.
Okay. Any other comments? So from my perspective, and to your point a little bit, and what we discussed last time, too, so the city was not able to apply inclusionary requirements to rental units previously because of state law, but since we have recently had the Palmer fix, we are now able to do that, and that is really the reason why this is in front of us. And I would make a guess that had, had the Palmer fix been in place several years ago, and when we first adopted the inclusionary requirements, we probably would have had it applied equally to rental and ownership units. As to the type of development, you know, whether or not, you know, applicability or inclusionary requirements would potentially flip a development to do rental versus ownership, I don't know that, but what I do know is that it could potentially attract certain type of development. So if we, if our requirements, inclusionary requirements do not apply to rental units, we are potentially sending a message to rental developers to come in and develop, as opposed to attracting ownership units. So I think we are, one way or another, if our ordinances do not equally apply to rental ownership units, I think we are sending a message that will potentially sway that decision. And I don't know that as a policymaker, I'd want to be making that type of statement, that I would prefer rental over ownership. So I think, and then let me finish to your other point, in terms of the state density bonus law requirements, just by complying our city inclusionary requirements, that does not fully satisfy the density bonus law requirements. Our inclusionary requirements are only 10%, meaning that if you have a 10-unit project, 10% of those units would need to be affordable inclusionary units, whether they're rental or ownership, if this passes. If you use the state density bonus program, there are several levels of affordability that the developer can choose. The lowest of them is very low income, and the requirement is 11%. If you do low income, your requirement is 20%. So, and then if you do moderate income, I think it's up to 35%. So, and it depends on, you know, how much, there's a variability in there. But it's not, you can't, simply by complying to 10% requirement, you are not going to be fully complying with the state density bonus requirement. So I don't think that that is, I don't think that these--
The hurdles, I think the hurdles become much easier to satisfy for the density bonus. And so by doing this, I think it sends a message that we're encouraging density, and so that is what I'm opposed to.
Yeah, I think I disagree, because I think by not doing this, we are encouraging rental development, and I don't want to send that message. I think that's my point.
Okay.
Any other, is, where are we? I mean, I'm certainly comfortable in moving forward with the second--
I'm comfortable with the way things are now.
And we already had public comment, so we're good on that sense.
Right. Well, I agree with you.
Well, if there are no other comments, I am happy to move to have ordinance number 484 read by title and number only and waive further reading.
So I'm looking for a second on that one?
This is the one where we don't have Janet read at all?
Exactly, so we don't stay here three hours listening to Janet.
I'll second that, that's fine.
Okay, so it's been first and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That seems unanimous.
Ordinance number 484, an ordinance amending Chapter 17.92 of the Clayton Municipal Code regarding inclusionary housing requirements.
I would then further move to adopt ordinance number 484 to amend the Clayton Municipal Code, Chapter 17.92, for inclusionary housing requirements for the purpose of including rental housing projects into this local housing requirement as allowed for by AB 1505, with the finding that approval of the ordinance will not result in a significant adverse environmental impact. As these changes were considered as part of the November 18th, 2014, city council adoption of the initial study negative declaration for the 2015-2023 Housing Element, ZOA 02-18.
And is that motion with that slight amendment we just made, adding the word and?
Yes, with, as amended.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Do we second as amended? Is that what we're doing?
Correct.
Second as amended.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so council member one opposed, but it does pass with a vote of four to one. So then we will move on to the item for which I think most of you are here today, which is item 10B, which is the consideration of a petition request by the Regency and Rialto Drive neighborhood residents for an on-street parking program by the city to permit only to alleviate their street parking issues associated with hikers and users of Mount Diablo State Park and Clayton Community Park. And I think we are going to have a report from our chief of police. Please.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. We're here tonight because this issue was brought to the city council on May 15th under public comment, when neighbors from Regency and Rialto Drives came and spoke about issues that they're facing with increase in parking for people that are hiking on Mount Diablo. And the request from the residents is that the city institute a residential permit parking only for their neighborhoods. In essence, they, the neighbors are stating that on weekends and holidays, a large number of visitors are hiking to the waterfalls and using Regency Drive in particular to park their vehicles. They're blocking driveways, leaving trash, generally creating a diminished quality of life for the neighborhood. After that council meeting, I went and took a look at the neighborhood and ordered signs and had them installed, and the signs basically tell the public to respect the neighborhood, that we will enforce littering and not block driveways. Since the signs have gone up, there's been some improvement, but that can also be attributed to less desirable hiking weather after the signs went up. I also met with the neighborhood representative, Jeffrey Weiner, in October, and he told me that in recent years, this problem has increased, and he attributes that to social media sites that direct hikers to park on Regency Drive. He described weekends and holidays where hundreds of cars use their street to find parking, and it makes it difficult for visitors of the residence to find places to park. It impacts service workers, delivery trucks, tradespeople. The residents aren't able to host parties during the weekends and holidays, during the daytime hours, because their guests can't find any parking. And Mr. Weiner stated that he surveyed all of the residents on Regency Drive and Rialto Drive, and all but three signed a petition asking the city to institute a residential-only permit parking. Since meeting with Mr. Weiner, I also met with Superintendent Ryan Goring from the State Parks, who is here today, and we discussed these issues. He says that the State Parks are aware that Regency Drive has had a parking issue for some time, but we all agree that the options to mitigate those concerns are limited. Some things that Mr. Goring pointed out was that people, they can park at the Mitchell, South Mitchell Canyon parking lot, there's plenty of parking, but some people choose to park on Regency Drive to avoid the $6 fee, and others bring their dogs into the park at the Regency entrance because it's really prohibited on the mountain, and it's a way to get around it. He also talked about the fact that if you park on Regency Drive and access the trail there, it's a shorter hike to the waterfalls, and you don't have to traverse some very muddy trails that-- He also talked about the fact that if you park on Regency Drive and access the trail there, it's a shorter hike to the waterfalls, and you don't have to traverse some very muddy trails that are between South Mitchell Canyon and Regency. After listening to all of their concerns, city staff determined there's three viable options to address the problem. One option would be to fence off the access at Regency Drive and Rialto Drive. The cost of that's approximately $22,000. That would alleviate the traffic issue, as people wouldn't be able to access that, but it also may push this problem to another neighborhood. There are other streets that you can access the trail from, so it may shift the problem. Another option is to institute residential permit parking for the neighborhood. Again, this may shift the problem somewhere else. And we would have to determine, you know, how far the permits would go, and put in place a process for administering a permit program and enforcement. It also, there are no permit, residential permit parking streets in Clayton, so this would set a precedent and could encourage other neighborhoods that experience parking problems to ask for the same thing. A third option is to do nothing. Continue to have the police officers monitor the area on weekends and holidays and issue the appropriate citations. This is a public street, and doing nothing would allow the public to continue to use the street and access the road, the trail. A fourth option that we talked about, that I don't think is feasible, is constructing a parking lot. You can see here that the grade, if the city wanted to construct a parking lot, the grade is pretty steep there, and so the cost to construct a parking lot would probably be prohibitive. And it really wouldn't alleviate the problem that the residents have complained about of the increased traffic and littering and other things that come with more people. So while that is an option, we just did not think it was a feasible option.
Okay. Thank you. And so for the benefit of the public, the way in which we'll kind of proceed is, we'll now have any council members ask any clarifying questions only, no opinions, just questions, and then we'll open up a public comment when everybody can provide their input, then we'll bring it back to the council for discussion. So are there any clarifying questions of staff? Anyone ask?
Yes, I have a couple.
Go ahead.
How many actions or citations have been issued up there since this issue came to light?
So we've issued 35 parking citations. We have not issued any moving violations, and we have not had any calls for service regarding vandalism, or littering, or any other, no calls.
You towed any vehicles?
No, we have not.
Is the parking-
Hmm, okay.
Is the parking citation volume in that area greater than in other areas of the city?
Since we started focusing, yes, on that, yeah.
Like, a lot greater?
A lot, yeah.
Okay.
And my question actually related to that one as well. So we have 35 citations since, I think, May or so. How did those citations came about? Is it, did our police officers increase patrolling there, or was it complaint driven that our residents called?
Yes, I directed the officers to increase their attention during weekends and holidays there.
Okay, yeah.
So just so I'm clear, what are the citations for?
I didn't bring the specifics, but I know a lot of them are for expired registration, and some for parking too far from the curb, and some from blocking a driveway.
Are we, when you give a citation, that doesn't appear anywhere. It doesn't get publicized anywhere in the blogs, in the blotter, excuse me.
Right, yeah. It is also a civil citation, so it's not a criminal, yeah, parking citations are not criminal.
Then I have one other question. So since May, I think we installed those signs out there that talk about, you know, don't park, you know, forget now what the language is.
Respect the neighborhood.
Right, yeah.
Don't break the law.
Yeah, so what's the sign size? Is that regulated or limited as to how big it can be, and then how high or how low it has to be or can be in any way?
If the city has an ordinance about sign size, I think that would be the only regulation, and I don't have that information. We can order a sign however big we want.
And is there some kind of safety thing as to how it has to be at least certain height, I assume, or I'm thinking about visibility?
Yes, yeah, we don't want it to fall off all over, obviously, but the idea, the design was, first, for the respect of the neighborhood and obey the laws, don't litter. That was more of, you know, trying to encourage people to be courteous that were using the area. So there isn't any sign limitation except that which might be in our sign code itself. The other was trying not to, we posted the smaller signs on the streetlight poles at various intervals. We tried to not make them really large that will convey to, let's say, a prospective buyer of a home in the area that, oh my goodness, there's a problem here, but let people be aware that, yes, it is signed, and please stay within the confines of legally parking your car.
Okay.
But they're not, outside of the, they're not like traffic regulatory signs, because blocking the driveway is already in the code.
Okay.
If I may add a comment to that, because I've been up there several times, particularly on the weekends when there is a problem. And yesterday, when we were there, it's difficult to read those signs. In my view, they don't stand out enough, green with a gold, excuse me, gold lettering with a green background. Even though they're visible, and there are three of them there, I mean, if it was a little more eye-catching, I would think it would go a little bit further to maybe deter some of the people from parking there and respecting the-
Sure, I can appreciate that, council member. I think what we were, again, trying to do was to introduce whether signage made any difference. Some people say, after you initially sign something, it begins to blend in, it becomes immaterial. So we were trying to be as unobtrusive but informative as possible. If there's a belief that larger signs will provide greater compliance, then we're certainly open to that.
I'm not suggesting larger, I'm suggesting more-
A different color that's not natural.
Well, something that would stand out, and I don't know what that color is, I'm sure you guys have a better feel on it, but something when you see it, it would catch your eye that-
Usually if you're looking for signs of that nature, you look for a color that is not natural in nature, if you will, because that's what will draw people's attention, like neon yellow or green or something along those lines.
The other thing, if I may, back when this issue first came up, we were made aware of the fact that a number of publications have encouraged hikers to come over to Clayton and access the Mount Diablo through there, and-
All of them.
Pardon me?
All of them.
And particularly Mount Diablo Magazine. And I believe we asked the farmer mayor to send a letter saying, "Don't encourage people", and I don't know if that happened or not. I know you told me that we, the city, have sent some sort of an objection letter to someone. Is that correct?
Two different subjects. The one is the, you know, commenting to the magazine itself. I don't know that that took place. I think the idea was that the council members themselves would do that. I do know even today, when I was online on all trails, I know Vice Mayor Pierce actually posted a comment, you know, about eight months ago, where many of the hikers were rating the trail as a wonderful experience, and she gave it two stars out of five to try to assist and discourage him, be more careful and whatnot in that area. But, you know, other than that, you know, people who are going to want to go there are going to go there irrespective of whether there's dissident comments on the social media. The latter issue that you mentioned, Councilmember Diaz, is when the State Park system was going through its master plan recently for this area, we did receive a copy of their master, their preliminary master plan. We noted that on there, there was at least a notation, some desire to perhaps increase the opportunity for people to go and access the State Park through the Regency Drive neighborhood. And the city staff at that time, and I didn't go back and dig it out, but I think actually over my signature, we sent our response to the state in Park and that system and indicated that that was not in the desire of the community or the city to further formalize or enlarge that as an access point to the State Park.
Okay, great. So then we'll open up public comment. So, and the reason why this item is in front of us today is because there was a neighborhood request for us to hear it and hear the concerns and see if there are any potential options to this. So I think every speaker, as usual, will have up to three minutes to speak. That's how it usually works. And if you do have any questions, you can certainly post the questions, but we won't do a Q and A, type back and forth immediately, but then, once we conclude and hear all the comments, then any of the council members can certainly bring any of you back up for clarifying questions or something like that. So if all of you will provide your comments, and we want to make sure that everybody gets a chance to speak. But if I might, I do have a stack of cards here, and others can submit their card to our city clerk as well if they want to speak. But I'd like to, I think, start by Mr. Weiner, I think, Weiner, or Weiner, because I think you have sort of organized this effort a little bit. So if we could start with you, and then we'll go through other cards thereafter.
Okay. Esteemed council, excuse me, I have a little call, so I hope this works. Esteemed city council, Madam Mayor, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to present our concerns again. We came here last May to present our issue to you, and you took us seriously. The signage, the increased patrol, as the chief has said, and the response has been great. We started the petition last year to put our concerns in writing, to make our problems known, and to seek a solution that is fair to residents and others. Individually, we had voiced our concerns, but not as a united community. This city should be able to find a way to allow us residential parking, and perhaps have a limited amount of parking for hikers that come from the outside. I'm speaking for myself as a 40-year resident of Clayton and a 31-year resident of my home on Regency Drive. When I bought the house, I knew the park was there. I actually used to take my sons, who were young at the time, to Mitchell Canyon, because that was the official entrance, and they had markers and a bathroom. The Regency gate was a metal gate, that's why it's called Regency Gate. There is no gate there now. The old gate was usually locked with a padlock. I have a picture which I'd like to share with everybody on what the gate looked like in 1989. It was a gate. The path is a fire trail. There were neither trail markers nor a map, which is currently there. The path, excuse me, there were cows that grazed nearby, sometimes you could even see them in the hills behind other homes in Regency facing the park. Excuse me. We were able to then go climb over the gate, squeeze through, and at times the gate was open, but we always had to lock it, close it behind us. So it was a gate to prevent cows from coming out. It wasn't an access point for the park. Although there was a sign that had a trail, but there was no trail markers or anything. You had no idea where you were going, and I've hiked it many times. The reason I'm talking about this is that people criticize us for being elitist, or too bad you knew what you had when you bought your house. That is blatantly untrue, and the park trined that trailhead after 1889, 1989, sorry. If you look at the park's 1989 general plan, you'll see mention of improving Donna Canyon, the Regency Gate area, by installing outdoor orientation interpretive panels. The park to this, the entrance to the state still has no bathrooms and is not accessible to a handicap or anybody with mobility problems. We all should enjoy the benefits of living in the Bay Area, but not denying others the basic benefit of homeownership. To that end, there's a parking lot in Mitchell Canyon that has bathrooms, staff, and is one of the four official parking entrances. People are coming here from San Francisco, Berkeley, and beyond, including out of the country, are passing two park entrances at Oak Grove and Mitchell Canyon. There's only one reason to drive here, and that's because it's free and promoted on the net. The other reason, some comment, is that dogs are not allowed in the trails, but they can get through the gate. The Save Mount Diablo organization wrote the city, impeded their case to keep the status quo as far as access to our streets. They had a hike scheduled for February 2 that directed hikers to my neighbor's home at 178 Regency. Today, they redirected this hike to Mitchell Canyon. For that change, we thank them. It's a nice sign of cooperation. Perhaps they read next door where the hike was brought to everyone's attention as an example of our problems. However, there are other planned hikes and groups and individuals that have cost them to state thousands of dollars and lost revenue at a time of need by directing people there rather than any of the four entrances. The argument that hikers add to the city's business is without, is without proof, and is highly doubtful, given that hikes start at nine and end at two. I'm a supporter personally of Save Mount Diablo, and I've seen the good work they've done to protect our open space, but they are just one of many websites that have or are promoting hiking and parking here. The majority of hikers are couples or groups of friends. They have no incentive to change their behavior. I've talked to many hikers, and it's usually here about our neighborhood from friends or learned it on the internet. If someone puts information on the web as a review on Google or Yelp, it will never come off. The number one source of information is Google and Google Maps, which are not impacted by a few clubs changing their websites. If you Google Fall Hikes, it'll direct you to 176 Regency Drive. Articles recommending our neighborhood are never gone. Prior to the explosion of information on the internet, there was a small inconvenience a few weekends in early spring, and when Contra Costa Times would run its article about the waterfalls. We put up with that for years. I encourage the council to read some of the websites to direct hikers here. My personal favorite is titled, quote, "Best Back Door to Mount Diablo: Avoid Those Devilish Crowds, Regency Gate," unquote. Then it gives driving directions to find, quote, "A familiar gathering of parked cars that say, 'Trail Start Here,'" unquote. Then again, there's the Google review who says, there's, quote, "Their spot is perfect for parking. You will have to go roughly a mile if you want to take Mitchell Canyon, but it's free, and there's always parking available," unquote. The review may be a little outdated on the ease of availability. The info is out there and can't be taken back. That door has closed. The increased publicity has gradually made our blocks to free Mount Diablo parking, for parking, excuse me. This is why the issue is here now, not 10 or 20 years ago. Other communities have dealt with disruptive parking by making it resident-only parking. Besides resident-only parking around BART, for example, most cities in the Bay, including ones where residents park here, have restrictive parking. In fact, the residents near Mercado Ranch staging area in Alamo have resident-only parking, and that's one of the four approved entrances to the park. The residents at Diablo Downs on Mitchell Canyon have signs prohibiting state parking. I have pictures that I'll share with you afterwards. To those who say it's unfair, it's no different than these examples. I have to pay to park at BART, at Cal Games, while residents have restricted parking. I can't park there. There is 13 neighborhoods in Walnut Creek and over 20 streets in Lafayette that have restricted parking. I assure you, no one moved here to avoid the $6 parking fee, but rather for the perceived peace and quiet tranquility of a dead-end street. I see Carson cities with resident-only parking permits, and that just adds salt to this wound. It may even affect our ability to sell our homes. Last year, a home for sale had to have cones blocking off parking so that an open house could be conducted. A realtor on next door said, "We may even have to disclose this problem to prospective buyers." Thank you for your time and careful consideration to the safety and quality of life that made us move to Clayton. All members of the council and our chief of police have made statements that you're here to improve our quality of life, preserve the quaintness of Clayton, and represent our interests. Specifically, last election, one of the candidates said, "I've always taken a citizen's concerns into account when making decisions in the best interests of our community. Acting positively on our petition is a way to fulfill that promise." I encourage the city to support our need for restrictive parking and to continue the outreach in the meantime. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And the reason why I didn't stop you when you heard the beep is because I knew you had organized some of the effort, but I would ask, yeah, and I would, but I would ask all the remaining speakers if you could please, please just stick to the three minutes when you hear the beep, and then if you just, if you agree with what the prior speakers say, you can always just say that you agree with the prior speaker, or, you know, you don't have to repeat the same thing. So let's start with here. I have a Maggie Araglio, please.
Unfortunately, I'm Maggie, too. She can't speak. She's here, but she has a cold.
Okay, you're here, but, okay.
I'm Maggie, and I live at the end of Regency, second house from the end on the right. We've been in our home since 1997. At that time, we usually had people parking by our house on weekends and occasionally during the week. I would say 85 to 90% of the hikers were Clayton residents, who always enjoyed meeting our neighbors and fellow Claytonites. About five to six years ago, websites started advertising our street as the perfect place to park for free, to enter Mount Diablo. Since then, we've had hikers parking by our house every weekend, and about 75% during the week. The hikers from out of town, out of state, and even out of country. My husband now has to guide me out of my garage due to the speeding cars. We've had people block our driveway, move our trash bins to park, and even move the bins into our driveway so we can get in and out of our garage. Once I saw a lady move our bins onto the sidewalk, and when I asked her what she's doing, she said she thought they were empty. We've had people walk on our property, kids run around our front yard, and throw trash in our yard. Our neighborhood has families with young children who can't have birthday parties until four due to traffic. Who would want little children running around with speeding cars going up and down the street? That is an accident waiting to happen. I can't believe Mount Diablo Park is happy not getting the fees lost to our free parking area. area. And I certainly don't want to move our problems onto neighbors on Weatherly, Myrick, El Molino, Dana Hills, et cetera. Since our location is out of the bag, the only solution I see is perhaps Mount Diablo stations a ranger Regency Gate and charging a fee. Maybe Clayton residents could show proof of residency and get it for free. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And then, I have Nancy Top.
Hi, I'm Nancy Top. I live on Peacock Creek and regularly use the Regency entrance as well as the Mitchell Canyon entrance of the state park. First, I would like to say thank you to councilman, council member Jeff Wan for informing the residents of Clayton of upcoming city council actions. Without such transparency, all the citizens of Clayton would have no knowledge of what is going on in their town until after decisions have already been made. I object to the fence or parking permit options on Regency and Rialto Drive for the following reasons. Resident parking permits will impede access to Mount Diablo State Park. Clayton would be meeting the needs of a few residents at the expense of other residents in Clayton and nearby areas, as well as at the expense of all the residents of the state of California. With resident parking permits, not only will Clayton be impacting the use of Mount Diablo State Park, they will be impacting the use of Clayton open space. With resident parking permits, Clayton will be setting a precedent that other locations in Clayton, as well as Walnut Creek, Concord, and other cities in the Bay Area, will use as a precedent to limit access to our common outdoor areas. If Clayton establishes resident parking permits on Regency, what will Clayton do to assist the residents on or near, or on or anywhere near the Clayton open space near Regency, including El Molino Drive, West Myrick Court, Locking Circle, Weatherly Drive, Mount Air Parkway, Mount Wilson Place, Mount Palomar Place, Mount Duncan Drive, and Mount Sierra Place? Additionally, what will Clayton do about all the people that would alternatively park at Clayton Community Park and at Diablo View Middle School? How will Clayton control the encumbrance on the use of those facilities? It is not the nature of Sierra Club members or other hiking groups to destroy areas. For others that do so, it is unfortunately a sign of our times that people have not been properly educated to be considerate of others. In my own neighborhood, which is adjacent to the East Bay Regional Park and numerous Clayton trails, we also encounter rude visitors, debris, and encroachment. This is a societal problem that needs a societal solution. Are there better alternatives than resident parking permits? Has it been considered to build a parking lot in the Clayton open space below Regency? Has Clayton considered specialized trash services in the area to accommodate the numbers of people who come there? Since the results of posting "Respect the Area" signs yielded a positive response, that is a good indication that education may be the solution to our issues, rather than privatizing a long-term easement to Mount Diablo State Park. I hope we can all work together to maintain full access to all our state park locations as well as to ease the burden on the residents who live nearby. Thank you.
Thank you. Then, next speaker is Karen Shackleton.
I'm Karen Shackleton. I've lived in Clayton for 30 years. I have a lot of friends in both sides of this dilemma. I think my main thing here right now that I would like the council to consider, and also Mr. Weiner and all the folks that live in this area, is to, I'm hoping that cooler heads will prevail. The last thing that I want to see as a volunteer in Mount Diablo State Park is a fence erected. I think that is probably the worst idea I could think of. That will simply just jump over to Mount Air Parkway, as Nancy just said. I would like to see us come to some kind of an agreement. I do know that within the park, we volunteers are more than willing to get on the internet. I know for a fact that some of our volunteers have already changed some of the announcements that were made for, for parking at Regency. It has been a problem. And I think we can also all agree that just the sheer numbers in the Bay Area, our, our Bay Area has more than doubled in size in just the last 20 years. It's a sheer volume, and everybody wants their nature experience, and everyone's entitled to it. I think the, the main majority of people that are going in at Regency are going in there just because that's a direct line to the Donner area, which is just a beautiful canyon, and coming over that meadow, a lot of people simply don't, they aren't able to do it. So at this point in time, I would just like to ask that everybody stay cool-headed, and please don't consider a fence. I just think that that's really the wrong way to go. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And I have Rick Lewis.
Thank you for allowing me to address the council. My name's Rick Lewis. I live at 170, which is second house from the end. I'm a relative newcomer to Clayton. I moved in here about 10 years ago. Although getting to and from Clayton from the greater Bay Area can be a challenge, I was taken by expansive views and access to Mount Diablo Trails. Just as a side note, John Ramos interviewed me yesterday also, and I fed him lunch. I fed him lunch. I got five seconds.
I got it, and I taped it, so I'll have it for future posterity.
Should have been a better lunch.
The sellers were honest about Regency Gate access, and in the first few years, parking and trash were never an issue. The last few years has been an explosion of the popularity, parking on Regency, and hiker traffic at the gate. I'm an avid runner of the trails and see many neighbors and local residents during the week, but the weekends are an absolute battle. I believe it's a product of social media, hiking websites to promote beautiful hikes and free parking at, at Regency. Jeff has shared 20 websites that say, "Park at Regency." You know, it's free. As a result, I see constant competition for parking, increased trash inside and out. And I might add that my neighbors all pick up the trash. I've seen every one of my neighbors picking up the trash after they get done hiking. So part of what keeps it clean are my neighbors. And I've also seen an increase in confrontations between hikers and neighbors, which, which worries me. So there's been an escalation of that. I'm not sure what the best solution for the problem is. I guess that would be your job. Certainly, elimination of all weekends and holidays in Clayton would solve the problem, but that's why I'm not on the council. I do not want to, like Karen, I do not want to restrict access to our beautiful mountain, but I think a change is, is certainly needed. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Then I have, I think it's Shirley Weiner.
My name is Shirley Weiner. I am his wife. I was asked to present the opinion of my neighbor who is unable to make the meeting tonight. Dear esteemed City Council, I apologize for not attending this important meeting in person. Please accept this letter outlining my concerns for the issue of weekend and holiday parking on Regency Drive. We, my wife and three daughters, have lived on Regency for the past 10 years. My wife and I are both healthcare professionals for a large HMO. Our home is six houses from the end of Regency Drive. There are four official entrances to the Mount Diablo State Park. North Gate Road entrance in Walnut Creek, the fee is $10. South Gate Road entrance in Blackhawk, fee is $10. McCardo Ranch staging area, fee is $6, and Mitchell Canyon, which is $6. These are the only official entrances to the park. Each of these locations allow the park to collect fees and effectively enforce official park hours from 8 to sunset. Nowhere in the official website for the park does it mention Regency, Regency entrance, or Regency Gate. However, there are multiple websites aimed at hikers, naturalists, bicyclists, and social activity groups that direct interested parties to enter the park at Regency Drive in Clayton. Many sites emphasize the free parking advantage of Regency Drive. I have listed some below, and there are 20 of them here. Over the past few years, this has caused a dramatic rise in vehicles parked in our neighborhood, which is simply not sustainable, in addition to the personal inconvenience of zero parking on weekends and holidays for our family and guests. We have experienced hikers changing clothes, standing in the street in their underwear, a wreath stolen from our front door, vehicles blocking our driveway, trash in the street and sidewalk, and a recent, and the scent of marijuana up and down the street. In addition to causing problems for Clayton residents, the park is losing income and the ability to monitor people entering and leaving. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Dr. Mark Mojito.
Great, thank you.
Okay, and now I'd like to speak for myself. Is that okay? I am a mother and now a grandmother. The safety of my children and now my grandchildren is my number-one concern. My grandchildren, when they visit, cannot do some of the same activities that their fathers did. They cannot ride in the street because of all the speeding cars and distracted drivers. They cannot play ball in front of my home without me worrying about their safety. In a few weeks, my son, who was born and raised here, is having a four-year-old birthday party for my grandson. I have never had the enjoyment of attending any of his birthday parties because they live out of state. We are planning on having some of my son's friends and their small children over at 11:00 AM on a Sunday for a party. I am praying for rain, even with a house full of small children. The reason is that they will not have a place to park within a reasonable distance. That's just not right. If the weather is nice, I have a neighbor who will move their cars so I can use their driveway. I will probably need a few neighbors' help. On New Year's Day, a few of our friends were planning a brunch. I could not offer my home because of the parking problem. It's a good thing, because on New Year's Day, the parking was full around my home at 8:00 AM, and by 1:00 PM, it stretched past the old seminary. I hope you do the right thing for our young neighbors who cannot have parties without juggling parking spots, and for our older residents who are afraid of being hit while backing out of their driveway. Thank you.
Thank you. Then I have, I think it's Judy Moon.
First of all, I would like to thank you for the work, especially the chief of police that you have done on this. And as you can tell, I've been there since my house was built on Regency Drive. And over the last two or three years, the parking situation and the speeding has gotten worse. As a teacher, I would like to recommend a resolution, or a solution to this. There is a lot of parking space on Rialto, down Regency, and down El Molino that do not where there are no houses. I recommend that we paint the curbs a certain color and post signs for hikers, "Park Here." It will increase the distance walking up to Mount Diablo, perhaps a fourth of a mile or a half of a mile. I've walked that many times myself, and there's plenty of space to park where there are no homes. I would also like to recommend, I hate speed bumps, but the speeding up and down that street has gotten terrible. I have grandchildren that I keep. As the last speaker said, they can no longer play around in the street, and I would like to see speed bumps put in, as much as I hate them, to slow down that. Offer that as a potential solution, and trust that you all will do the right thing. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Then the next speaker is Lori Brekleb, please.
Thank you to the council and to the police department for listening to the residents and their issues. I feel for the residents and the traffic they deal with. I'm not in that area, but I have been a citizen of Clayton for 18 years, and I do use both the Regency Gate and the Mitchell Canyon Trailhead, not because one's free and one isn't. I go where I want to hike, and that determines where we go. Please don't fence off access. That doesn't seem like the right thing to do. I think a temporary solution for weekend and holiday permits for the local residents is a great idea. I've seen it done in Berkeley and other cities where it causes me to go find a parking lot, which is good. I think the signage should designate where the hikers are to park. If you want them in Clayton Community Park, then put a sign up to let them know that's where they can park. And I think we can encourage Clayton and maybe even the Business Association to get ahold of those people who come in from out of town, who come in from out of state to visit our park. It's a treasure, and if they're in Clayton, why don't they get a sandwich at the sandwich shops? Why don't we entice them if they're here, coming for this treasure? Let's, let's capitalize on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Teresa Residi, I believe.
Hi, my name's Teresa Residi. I've lived in Clayton for 22 years, and before that, I lived in Concord, and I knew about the Regency Gate. I cannot say whether it was closed 30 years ago, but it wasn't closed 25 years ago. And my number-one reason for moving to Clayton was to hike the trails. In particular, I live in Dana Hills, and I go in through the Regency Gate, and I would not live here if it was not for the mountain and the park, which is a public park, and the streets around it are public streets. I think a fence is an abomination. I would leave if you put up a fence. I think there are some possible compromises. I think that there is, you can see on this picture, some parking near the trailhead that is not in front of anybody's house. I don't know why hikers could not park there.
I do.
Okay, and why they couldn't continue to park there. I think, you know, if you want to put up permitted parking in front of the houses, then maybe that's an okay idea. I like the idea of the speed bumps. But mainly, I just want to say that I'm really against the fence. I think if this issue was more well-known, because I didn't even know about it, a friend of mine from Concord told me about it, if the people from Dana Hills knew about this, you would have a different feeling in this room right now. In addition, everybody who parks on Regency will just move over to Mount Air. So now you've got that park problem in addition. I'd also like to say, I'm a painter, and I park at the end of Mount Air Parkway, even though I live in the neighborhood, and I bring my painting supplies out there, and I could not access that without being able to park at the end of the street. I've been all over the East Bay. I like to find trailheads in places where there are views, and by far, the vast majority of neighborhoods, I am allowed to park and access to trailheads. It's very rare not to be able to do that, and I would like to keep Clayton like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Then the next speaker is Jennifer Rowe.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Rowe, and I'm a Clayton resident. I've lived here for 20 years, and I've lived in the Bay Area for a lot longer than that. And I remember when, where we live was a much less crowded place, but we can't turn back the clock, and hence the problem before us tonight. The proposed barrier or permit-only parking Monday through Sunday would restrict access to Regency Gate every single day of the year, and that's an excessive reaction. And for that reason, I oppose both options, but here are my thoughts. First, I'd like to point out that there are many stakeholders who will be impacted by the city council's decision in this matter, but the only group considered on the agenda report that I read were the homeowners on Regency and Rialto Drive. So I implore the city council to identify all the stakeholders before making their decision. One group to consider, and that's been mentioned already... One group to consider, and that's been mentioned already, are weekday hikers like myself. My home is a few miles from the gate, and I hike on Donner about three or four times a month, and I'll park along Regency. And during the midweek, there's absolutely no problem during a regular week to find parking. So I don't see a reason to impede the gate at that time. But another group to consider in the council's decision are the least able-bodied, the less robust hikers and walkers. And this group includes the elderly, the families with small children, and individuals with physical limitations. They, by necessity, must seek out the easier trails. Donner Canyon Road is popular with this group, not only for its unique beauty, but also because it offers a long stretch with a gentle grade, a very walkable trail. If these people must now park at Mitchell Canyon to get to Donner, then they've effectively been barred from walking Donner Canyon, because the added distance will be an added challenge. And we all know Donner Canyon is a special place, not interchangeable. We know why people of all physical abilities want to enjoy it. So I implore the city council to please consider this group in their decision-making. Also, in recent years, I've been a regular volunteer at the Mitchell Canyon Visitor Center, and I can tell you with certainty that that parking lot at Mitchell gets impacted. It gets full on many popular weekends during the year, the times when Mount Diablo is at its best. So we would be turning these people away. It's not going to be added dollars to the coffers of Mount Diablo on the popular weekends. It's not true that the Camp Mitchell Canyon has ample parking all the time. But if there's data on traffic patterns and parking, then it needs to be shared. If there's no data, then further study is needed to make an informed decision and not assumptions. The least restrictive option in this matter is option number five, to enlarge recent efforts, the new signage and other police efforts that have yielded positive results, some positive results according to the police data. This is beginning to turn the tide, so please first, build on what's been started, add the speed bumps, get the word out on social media, which is powerful, and it can change. They can reverse the course. Educate park visitors, and continue with strict law enforcement. But most of all, I implore the city council to please consider all stakeholders in their decision-making and pursue the least restrictive option.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker is Daniel Walsh.
Which one?
Either one. Either one, I guess.
Counsel, first and foremost, I'd like to thank you guys for being here. Jim, nice to see you again. I haven't seen you since I was in high school. But more to the point, I'm currently representing one of my neighbors. It's the Adams family, ironically enough with the name, but we'll get past that point. The point is as follows. The two of them can't be here tonight. Both of them work in public service, one over in Antioch as a detective, the other one works for Contra Costa Department as a dispatch worker, who has had to go out of their way to deal with the parking situation over here. Now, I live on 152 Regency Drive. I'm a resident. I've been there for 18 years. I remember having my first job out this ways. I had to deal with the parking issues trying to get out of my parking spot where I was boxed in. I remember people crashing into my car when I lived there and then driving off. But this isn't about my opinion. This is about my neighbors. My neighbors who have two young kids, when I say young, I mean under the age of two, who have to deal with the fact that people are driving down our public street at an excess of 50 miles an hour, who have to deal with the fact that while this is not an official trailhead, and while all of us here, and by that, I mean the majority of us residents, don't want a gate, we don't want to block off the access to people. We want people to be able to hike. We want people to enjoy nature. That's not a significant solution. That's not going to be effective. And while the signs have been useful, and thank you for that, by the way, they're not getting much done. We still have an excess of trash that is left on the street side. We still have people going out of their way to be disrespectful. We still have people picking fights with residents there. I have no issues with people coming and visiting the park. I have no issues with people parking at the end of the street. But it's become a problem when we can't leave our own homes, when we can't go to mass and then come back and have a parking spot for ourselves when we live there, when we can't go out of our way to be able to enjoy our own weekend with our family and friends because there's nowhere for them to park. Now, I don't know how to fix the situation. I'm not part of the city council. I'm a fairly young fellow. But I hope to God that all of you guys can stand up and realize that it's not just a matter of the people here, and I say this to every last person who's here. Thank you for being here, first and foremost. But for those of us who live here, it's become a problem. But we don't want to impede the rest of our people here. We don't want to impede people coming in to see the state park. We want them to be able to enjoy that. We need a solution that benefits everyone. A permit might not be the best thing. A limited permit where we can at least guarantee one spot out of three in front of our house, yeah, that'd be useful, especially for those of us who have larger families and can't all park in the driveway and don't have the space in our parking lots. I'm sorry that we don't have a significant thing. I'm sorry that people seem to be under the impression that, at the end of the day, we're trying to close stuff off. We have no intention to. We hope that you have the rest of the night. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. And then the next speaker, Catherine Poenger, or I can't read the text, at 139 Regency Drive. Catherine?
Sorry, I can't. Last name starts with a P, but I can't read the letters. I'm sorry. Sorry.
My name is Kathy Bendz. I live on 139 Regency Drive, and I've been there since the house was first built, and we never had a problem. In 1976, there was a gate there, and we never had any parking problem or hiking problems and whatnot. I think that will be the solution. Since the park doesn't get any revenue from what's happening today, I don't see why that could be a problem. And this parking permit, it will incur costs to our residents, which I don't think is right. We live there, and we have to pay for parking. Basically, everything else has been said and mentioned, but I agree with the gate. If we could do something with that and the social media, if we could keep it down or tell them to advertise this a little bit differently, maybe that'll deter some of the others, not the everyday, regular hikers and walkers, but maybe some other people that may or may not want to come, but they're curious because of all the ads. Thank you.
Thank you. Then I have Dan Walsh.
The last place I want to be is right here. I'd rather be watching the Warrior game.
Sorry.
So...
They won, by the way.
Thank you. It's nice to hear.
Spoiler alert. In case you're recording.
Yeah, in case you're recording to go home and watch.
It's always fun to watch how they get there.
All right. So, you know, there's been a lot of hostility that we've seen on Clay Court about this. And I'm here to tell you that not one of the residents here on Regency ever mentioned anything about putting a gate up, blocking people's access. We're not anti-hikers, okay? We're not into that. You know, none of us responded in the vile comments that were made on Clay Court. Not one of us responded, okay? We're here to try to come up with a solution. And this is up to you guys. We're not saying to give us the whole street, like my son was saying, maybe a parking spot outside somebody's house, outside our house, you know, some limited parking for us. You know, I've gone through this with you guys the last time we were here. We talked about how rude and inconsiderate some of these guys are. They block our driveways. On several instances, I had my driveway encroached from five to seven feet. I had a hiker to block my kid's car in. One actually drove his car up underneath my son's car, then he walked off to hike. My neighbor Sue, right here, Sue had somebody fully block her driveway and walk off to go hiking. And neighbor Judy alerted Sue as the person got down to the trailhead, and she told Sue, basically, "I'll just be gone for an hour." Okay, these are some of the inconsiderate things that we've had to deal with. I'm not saying all the hikers are like this, because that's not true, okay? On May 5th, my neighbor Jen, who's on the right-hand side of me, he had somebody seven feet in his driveway, and I was getting ready to pull out. So as I was driving up, another hiker pulled on the other side of Jim's driveway and pulled five feet into his driveway. And so I stopped my car, got out, and I told him, I said, "Hey, what are you doing?" He goes, "Well, I think he could still get his car in and out of his driveway." I mean, 12 feet of his driveway were being blocked. So, I mean, Judy will tell you, and you saw the picture on the news last night of the car that was parked in the red zone. That's not the first time, okay? You know, it's right there at the fire hydrant at 145 Regency Drive. Several times, we've almost been hit when we back our cars out of the driveway. We have to have somebody almost guide us out sometimes. Hikers are busy trying to seal spots. They don't pay attention when they're driving down the street. Maybe we should do some speed bumps also, because like you heard, these guys are coming like 40, 50 miles an hour down our street. I remember a time when I used to be able to play ball out in the street with my kid. We used to play football going across the street, throw baseballs down the street. We can't do that anymore, okay? We find people leaving trash behind, as you've heard, dirty trash, wet socks on our lawn, Gatorade bottles in my mailbox. I mean, they block our sidewalks. They're lying down on our sidewalks after the hikes, having picnics, lounging around. I mean, it's just been ridiculous, you know? And as far as the comments that were made about the trailhead being accessible for elderly going down, that's a bunch of crap. If you've ever walked down that, you know that anybody with any kind of issues walking would never be able to go down there if they were elderly. So basically, I'm just asking you guys to kind of look at this, and, you know, this is a quality of life thing for us. It's impacted us, and there's some people here that don't have any skin in the game, and they want to throw us as the sacrificial lamb so they can go hiking. We want our neighborhood back.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker is Beth Walsh.
I think you've already heard enough of the complaints, with the exception, I do have a statement from one of our newer neighbors who says she has actually witnessed not only cars hitting other cars, but they did have a situation where they thought they had hikers parked in front of their house, only to find out that these people were stalking the house, stole their mail, and took off the moment she came down the path after them. They also have had situations where literally people are camped out in front of their house. They might be trying to wash cars, having to move vehicles a half mile down the block in order to be able to move the vehicle back to clean the other car. This particular neighbor said, as a side note, she's worked with the Concord Police Department for the past 12 years, and she answered Clayton calls as well. She recalled taking a few calls from time to time over the years, parking issues and disturbances, et cetera. But now that she lives here, she's seeing something quite different. She guaranteed that there'll be many more calls for service if it continues. It's her second and final note. She's lived here for a year and a half, has two kids under the age of two, works full-time, including weekends, and she's pretty busy, not looking out her window, and still have encountered this in the limited time as a resident. She lives here, plans to stay here, and would like to think that all the residents will be heard. I'd like to just offer up a couple of things. I'm in fairly decent health. I exercise on a regular basis, and we'd love to hike this mountain as well. I will tell you, that grade is my least favorite part of that hike, both coming and going. It's the worst part, you know? Whether you go down the gravel path or the rocky side path, it's not easy to transfer over. And I've done the Mitchell Canyon Walkover, too. There's pros and cons to that. There is a lot of parking actually on Regency. That whole end of the street, the residents don't use. We leave it for the hikers. We respect that they want to be there. As you come down Regency, a little further by the old seminary, there's a lot of open space there on both sides of the road, as well at the bottom of Regency, where the dog park is. Those are ample areas that the hikers could have access to if we did curb paint. We want them there. We understand. We don't want to fence it off. They're just going to, you know, we know how to get over fences, folks. But if we could maybe come up with a compromise where we could have that as public access parking, I also know that with the new gym, there's lots of parking on the weekends. Been down there myself. But if we could maybe opt to do one or two permitted parking spots for the residents, we should. If we need extra parking, that still gives some parking for the hikers, as well as all of the open space parking, too. Okay, thank you.
Next speaker is Eric Wren.
Good evening, counsel. My name's Eric Wren. I'm the property owner at 176 Regency Drive. I'm the lucky guy that gets all the traffic directed to my house. I'm also a commercial real estate broker in the area, and I understand property valuation very well. We're talking about my home here. We're not talking about someone's recreational outing here. As the owner last house on the street, I've borne the brunt of the impact from the state park entrance. Over the past 15 years, it's changed from being a couple weekends during the spring to a year-round assault by out-of-the-area people seeking to avoid the paying the park entrance fee. What started out as a way to let local citizens access the park has now turned into nightmare for residents and into the quiet enjoyment we're entitled to as property owners. The park has become a bad neighbor to those of us located next to it. Regency Gate can no longer support park visitors. There's no ADA access there, so there is not any way that you would take someone handicapped or elderly person down that to access it. There's no place for vehicles turned around. Over 100 cars a week use my driveway to turn around, causing excessive wear and damage. I have pictures here of the concrete damage and the street damage from cars turning around in my driveway. There's no waste or recycling facilities. Trash gets dumped at the entrance and the exits and in our yards. And maybe if we're lucky, they'll come in and throw their stuff in our garbage cans as well. There's no sanitary facilities. People urinate in public. I've had people knock on my door multiple times to ask to use my restroom, my bathroom, and it was not because they wanted to urinate. Non-residents ignore parking regulations and block driveway access. They also ignore the speed limit and race down Regency well above the posted speed limits. There's no control over people taking dogs into the park either. There's no regulation on that gate. There's no changing facilities. People dress and undress right on the street and sit in our front yard to do it. It's okay if it's a young woman, but most of it's old guys sitting out there, and I don't want to see them. Moving to park permit parking will lower property values in the area, and that's not acceptable to me. The only long-term solution is to close Regency Gate. The do-nothing option for the city, you have to factor in the cost of a class-action lawsuit that you're going to have to defend from the property owners as we seek back to correct this and get this back to our homes. To any of those people that oppose, you know, if you really care about that park, you will be going to the entrance and paying your fee to support that park, rather than coming around and trying to do the in-run around. What I also say is, you know, now as those property owners, you better believe we have to legally disclose that there is a parking issue on that street. That has to be done now. And I would say also, I do call all the time. I've tried to protect the police department with not giving them calls all the time, but there's not, almost a single day goes by that I'm not impacted. This was, this past weekend, I had to, when I left and came back from the gym, I had to negotiate with the guy to tell him to move so I could pull back into my driveway. As he was getting out his car, he's still telling me, "This is your house? This is your house? And this is the one?" And I called, and it was two hours for the police department, who has much better things to do, but this was this Sunday.
Okay, thank you. And if you want to pass those, if you can give them to Councilmember Juan, and we'll pass them on to the STD clerk at the end. Thank you. Next speaker, Rusty Perkins.
I believe my neighbors covered everything way better than I would. Thank you very much.
And then next speaker is Don, or Dan, I'm sorry. Dan Kutzman or Katzman?
Yes. I'm Dan Katzman. I'm Dan Katzman. I'm an 18-year resident of Key Lockway. And back in the 90s, when I still lived in Pleasant Hill, I used to always drive over and sometimes hike out of Mitchell Canyon, but mostly hike out of the Regency Gate. It's a much better place to hike from. I can get to all four peaks. The mud is not nearly as bad there if you know which way to go than if you go out of Mitchell Canyon. And so, other than the spring when the wildflowers are really nice in Mitchell Canyon, I tend not to go there, not because of price sensitivity, but because the Regency Gate's a better trailhead, and most of the hardcore hikers in the East Bay know that. And so, you know, things like closing the gate is, in my mind, going to be a nonstarter, and you'll get tremendous pushback from... and you'll get tremendous pushback from that. What I have heard are some reasonable suggestions from people about giving them individual spaces for local residents in front of their house, putting in speed bumps, you know, putting red paint on the corners of the driveway to encourage people not to block the driveway. And I think the best thing I heard was directing people towards where it's appropriate for hikers to park. And so, I would very much like to encourage the city to look for sort of the in-between things to do it. And then the other piece of the puzzle that might help solve it is that the opinion leaders of the hikers tend to be pretty responsible, reasonable groups. You know, so it's the Sierra Club, it's the East Bay Hikers Group, there's Danville Hikers, there's, you know, I don't even pretend to know all of them, but there's a large number. If we put together some outreach about, can you get your people to park here instead of there, and here are the problems we've been having, and if we don't get the problem solved, bad things will happen, so try to pass the word on. We could probably get a lot of the opinion leaders who are influencing these hikes to not only encourage people to go to the right place, but to, you know, mine the Ps and Qs in the area. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next speaker is Juan Pablo Galván.
Hello, hello, hi. Good evening. My name is Juan Pablo Galván, Land Use Manager for Save Mount Diablo. In 1971, there was just one park on the mountain that was less than 7,000 acres, and today there are more than 50 parks and preserves on and around Mount Diablo that total more than 110,000 acres, and we had a great deal to do with that. First off, I'd just like to say the neighbors have a point. There are definite traffic and parking trash concerns, dogs that aren't even supposed to be in most areas of the park. And as we understand it, from our volunteers and our own experience, it's not a year thing. It's definitely the winter and spring months, weekends, and holidays during that time, but it can be a significant issue. I read the staff report and commend the city and the residents for bringing it to the city's attention. Chief of Police and the departments work on that. Signage helped improve things, and that's a very good step. And to those that made a point of it before it was brought to my attention, Save Mount Diablo did yesterday release a post online for a hike for the Falls Trail that did advertise Regency as our starting point. As timing would have it, yesterday was also the first time I was aware that this was an issue. And of course, on the off chance something would happen, I checked this morning, saw it, and my heart stopped for a beat because I was going to be crucified tonight, and I had them fix it immediately. So now we're sending everyone to Mitchell Canyon, and SMD will be doing that from now for all our group activity hikes. Thank you, thank you. Sorry that happened. But other things came about because of that. I've been talking with officials from state parks, volunteers who have already spoken, and some of them have reached out to websites, bloggers, et cetera, that advertise other outings that describe Regency as a starting point, and have already, just today, received thoughtful responses that, okay, we'll shift to Mitchell Canyon and other parks. So, this just came to our intention as an issue, and I think there is a definite solution that alleviates the concerns of neighborhood residents, but also does not block off access to beautiful public land for the public, which I think is what we all want. In the State Parks Forward Initiative that was finalized in 2015 by Governor Jerry Brown and all the committees related to that, one of the fundamental pillars to improve the state parks' experience across the state is to expand access for users to state parks, and I think that's very important. I would really like, for all stakeholders, the city, volunteers, Save Mount Diablo Park to get together to discuss solutions that do not block access but also solve this problem for the community, and I think there's definitely something that can be done and is already getting snowballed. So, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. And then my last speaker card, although we will have anybody else who wants to speak as well, but it's Terry Denslow.
So I'm a resident of Dana Hills for the last year and a half. Prior to that, we lived out of state. Prior to that, we lived in Concord. We're avid hikers, and part of the reason that we moved to Dana Hills was to be close to the mountain and close to Regency. As someone had mentioned a little bit earlier, you know, personally, I used to come and park on Regency all the time when I lived in Concord to come hike for the same, some of the same reasons mentioned, that there's access to multiple trails other than the waterfall trails that are much better, easier access from here, not because of the fees. But all of that aside, we can, they have, there's a real, there is a real concern here, and I remember driving Regency and taking 30, 40 minutes even to just find parking. And so, one of the things that I don't know if the city has considered, the way I look at this is we've got to try to drive behavior, right, of the hikers. And one of the things that I've been kind of thinking about is, as we talked about the permitting process, maybe something that we want to consider is adding to that maybe a day-use permit or something like that for the hikers. Because as soon as, as soon as people start to violate that and they start to get tickets as quickly as you see on social media, people talk about parking there, you'll see people talking about don't park in there. And if you think about potentially trying to drive the behaviors that you want people to park in Mitchell Canyon and take that walk over, it's not as convenient of a hike, but if they're really parking here for cost reasons, maybe an opportunity is to put that permitting process, I don't know, a little bit higher than what it would cost at Mount Diablo, or I mean, at Mitchell Canyon. So if it really is a cost that's causing people to go here, then you push the traffic into, you know, the area where you're going to actually be able to collect the funds for, you know, for Mount Diablo, and you start to drive the behaviors away from, you know, away from just going to Regency. I also agree with what was said a little bit earlier about the impact of Dana Hills. Here is, it's not going to be, you know, social media just travels fast. That's how I get, I hike all over the world, and that's how I get a lot of my information. And as soon as, you know, somebody says that something has been changed on Regency, people will say, go to Mount Air or some other area, and you can't, you can't fight it. You can't fight it. It's just gonna, social media is just going to continue to spread, and there's not much, you know, there's not much, I think, that you really can do there. And so I think it's really a matter of how do we come up with solutions that drive the behaviors that we want. So, that's just something forward to consider. I don't know how feasible it is, but, you know, hearing us talk about, you know, closing the access off, you know, is really bothering some to me. I hope that's not the route that ultimately end up going.
Great, thank you. And then I don't have any, I don't have any more speaker cards, but if anybody else would like to address the council, please just come up to the dais, and you can fill out a card after, and please state your name and address.
My name is Raymond Grimmond, and my address is 79 Regency Drive, and I have lived there since 1986, so it's been 33 years we've been there. And I pretty much agree with all the comments that my neighbors have made, but where I live, I'm just at the top of the hill by the junction of Rialto. And it's not only just a problem from Rialto onwards, it's a problem all the way down Regency, because there's been weekends and holidays where the cars are parked nearly to El Molino. So that's the sort of scope and the number of cars that we have going there. Totally against the fence of, no, a fence will just not work, is not the right thing to do. I wonder whether anyone, including the state park, has looked at a possibility of moving some, creating access further down Marsh Creek Road. I'm not sure whether Russellman Park is actually private or not, but are there access points or something, properties that could be bought, or something could be done to build parking lots down Marsh Creek where there's a lot more room and provide access to falls that way? Though that would mitigate the amount of traffic and parking on our neighborhoods. And my other comment is really, you need to be very careful not to move the problem, because these guys may have parking, you know, we may have permitted parking at one end, but again, you may push the problem down into El Molino and affect people down there, and also the other Regency Woods access points to trail. And thank you for letting me speak and giving me the time to speak. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Please come up to the podium if you will, and if you could state your name and address, please.
Could they fill out a card for?
Yeah, you can fill out a card afterwards.
Rusty Perkins. But the other gentleman, could you fill out a card? Okay, thank you.
Lived in Clayton all my life.
I'm sorry, your name is again?
Rusty Perkins, Russell Perkins. Lived in Clayton all my life, married, raising a family here, live at the very end of Rialto Drive, right where the lemon tree is, very end. And most of my concerns have already been covered, but what's driving me nuts is just the blatant disrespect of people that have been hanging out in front of my house. You know, I have people that will spend the night there, they will wake up in the morning, they're there in the morning. We have people will come home from work or whatever. I have people sitting on my lawn, having a picnic. It drives me insane. We have a, we have a lemon tree up front. My wife loves it, you know, we got to prune it every year. It's her pride and joy. You know, anyone wants a lemon, take one. It's not a big deal. I love it, you know, take a few. More, God, it's been probably three times, I come home, every single lemon has been stripped from that tree. It's like 200 lemons on it. It's like, jeez, come on, people. The other thing is urination. My, my kids' windows are right there in front of the house, right? And people, they, most of these people are from out of town, granted. I mean, a lot of hikers around here, great people. These are all out of town for the most part. They come up, and before you take a lemon, think of this, they pee on the lemon tree that's right in front of my kids'. It just, it drives me nuts. And those respect, what was it, respect the neighborhood signs? It's, it's right there in front of my house, right? And so this is happening, and I'm like, God, the irony of this, right? Three weeks ago, this is embarrassing probably for them more than me, people park in front of my house, no big deal, they're there for 10 hours. I go out, I go out to get something out of my truck at nine o'clock at night, and they are making sweet, sweet love right there under that sign in front of my kid's window. And I, you know, what do you say? So I'm standing there, you know, and I say, hey, hey, I slam my door kind of hard, and when I walk up, I'm like, hey, can you guys stop? My kid's window is right here. And the guy MFs me up and down, and I say, well, we'll call the cops, and pulls up his pants, and they drove off. But anyways, it's the, it's the blatant disrespect from these people that have really got me. I grew up here, I have a lot of pride in this community, I work in this community, and that's just what we're dealing with as homeowners. And this is a new thing. I've been in this house for eight years, and first five were fantastic, and it's this new generation of people that are coming through, through the internet or through out-of-town, that is really causing a problem in my neighborhood. So anyways, I hope we can find a way to resolve this, and I'd like to thank all of you for listening to me, my complaint and first-world problems today. Take care, thank you.
Thank you. Before I close public comment, yeah, please come up. I think you already spoke, so we don't, we don't do duplicate speaking. You spoke, right? But if any, I think there was a lady in the back, sorry. Please state your name and address and...
My name's Michelle Nguyen, and I live at 313 Mount Air Parkway in Dana Hills. I'm the very last house on the end, and I just want to say that it is coming over into Dana Hills. I've lived there for five years, and it has gotten a lot worse in the last two years. I've experienced a lot of what everyone else has mentioned, trash moved, people parking in front of the fire hydrant, people sitting outside smoking marijuana in the cars. I have had condoms on my driveway. I, my drive is constantly being used as a turnaround. And again, I don't want to close the gate out, but it's, I can't even let my kids play in the driveway. He likes to drive on his little tractor, and we can't let him do that now because of the speeding. You can go out and see speed marks down Mount Air Parkway right now, right at the bottom from where people have been speeding and braking. And I just, I hope there's some solution that pieces everyone, and I, again, I don't know what that is, but I just want you to let you know that it is coming over onto us, and we are experiencing it. And I have seen on some websites to park at Mount Air Parkway, not just on Regency, so it is out there now too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sure, if you can pass them at the end over here now, but please come up. And state your name and address.
My name is Anthony Arantes, and I have lived at 33 Rialto Drive for 23 years. In that 23 years, I could hardly say that I have any type of input on Regency Drive. I've definitely seen it. Rialto has gotten a lot less of it. However, I do believe that, that being the state of California, that public access is a right. Now, the problem I also feel is a growth issue. The Bay Area in general has just gotten bigger. I've lived here for my entire life, and the internet has pretty much just given access to everyone to be able to come by and look and see what we have. Now, I also think that there's an opportunity here for the city of Clayton. There are ways that you guys could take advantage of it. I like the permit parking idea as far as not necessarily charging for parking, but designating it, giving power back to the residents to, if people park illegally in front of their house, to have their, have action taken care of for them. But to block off that access completely, I feel, would be doing a disservice to mankind. I feel like people have the right to experience humanity, and I think that that's something that's going to be compounded in the next few years. With social media and people becoming aware of how it's affecting them, they're going to be looking for outlets to human places to go and experience real life. In Clayton, it's going to be one of the top spots. Mount Diablo being a massive centerpiece for the Bay Area, and the Bay Area being a massive centerpiece for the rest of the world. So, like I said, I feel there is opportunity to be had. I feel like funding could be made to build a parking lot, maybe if they did, if we did start charging for Regency access parking for the people who want to go hiking and have easier access, and then if they don't have the permits while they're parking there, then they can get towed, they can get citations, that's revenue for the city. Be able to install bathrooms down there eventually, maybe, that could be publicly funded. Who knows how many of the residents would be willing to donate some of their hard-earned money towards putting bathrooms down there so that they're not getting peed on? But we'll see. It's up to you guys.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Going once, going twice, going twice. So we'll close off public comment and then bring it up for the council to discuss. Who would like to start? I do want to maybe just add first, before we get into discussion, I do appreciate the, all the residents coming together and kind of bringing this. I think the residents did a lot of research, putting together petition and putting together the overall statements, and I really appreciate from a perspective, it's much better that the way in which you did in a very organized manner as opposed to having a discussion on next door, because none of us can have a meeting on next door. So I appreciate that very much. So I'm hopeful that we'll come to some solutions that will work for everybody, but I'll let...
Can I ask if Superintendent Gearing would be willing to address us? He's sitting there very quietly off to the side, but really, this is the state park, and we don't control the property in the state park. And so, do you have any solutions or proposals or ideas or...?
Yeah, again, we really feel, you know, feel for the residents. This has been a recent issue that has popped up because of technology, so we do recognize that that's, it's gotten worse over the years. In all of our state parks across the state, we're running into these issues with, with, you know, Ubers and drones and stuff, so these are challenges for us across the board. I appreciate the city, the chief of police and the city manager coming to us to try to come up with solutions. We are definitely interested in moving the, you know, people to Mitchell Canyon where our day-use area is, where we have facilities that they will be using the restrooms, using the trash. We would love to work with, continue to work with the city to come up with some short-term solutions and also work for some long-term solutions. We do have a lot of interest. It's building within the last couple of days, and then again, with our volunteers, so we could, in short term, we can have volunteers come out and educate people on what they're doing. We typically don't... We typically don't have trash cans out on our trailhead because of our lack of staff over the years, and it's just so remote. I think we could potentially get a trash can out there and have either volunteers or our maintenance make a special trip out there, so maybe some of the trash isn't making it out to the streets. That's probably not going to solve all the issues on the road in the long term, but it'll be at least a spot where they could deposit some trash as they exit our trails. Going back to the social media sites, Google, even just today, I didn't know that there was an actual Google Falls Trailhead location. Those pop up, we don't have control over those, but Google is a state park's partner. They actually do trail, you know, like they have Google Roads, they have trails on some of our state parks. So I'm fairly confident we can contact Google and get cooperation from them to remove that site. And then with all the other social media sites, it's just a matter of us learning. So if the residents have those sites, the state is more than willing to contact them and, you know, try to get them to remove this as a location for our hikes and move it over to Mitchell Canyon. So I think working for some short-term solutions is trying to come up, but again, you know, are there other options? At Mitchell Canyon, we do have potential for expanding some of our parking there, so if we do get increased use over at that location, we have a plan to do that as well. I'm not, this area has some challenges with topography and the creek and environmental concerns, but looking, you know, close to this area, because I think it's always going to be an attraction for people going on certain hikes in this vicinity, you know, where can, is there possibilities to do any development in that area? There is Prop 68 funding for other agencies to, that benefits to get funding for state park access that was recently approved, so that could be something that the city looks into for funding.
Okay, I have a good question. So on the Mitchell Canyon entrance, so where you have a parking lot, what's the capacity and how much is it utilized on--
Right now, we have a couple of large gravel lots, but if those were not, or gravel piles, if those weren't out there, the capacity is about 200 vehicles. And we think that we can add an additional 100 plus with an additional lot that we could build.
Is that counting the overflow that's right out--
That's including the overflow lot, correct.
How utilized, oh, sorry.
Oh, how utilized is? It's fairly full on some of the busy weekends, you know, when it's really nice, clear, it gets close to capacity, I don't think we've, we might gotten full a few times, but it's rarely at max capacity. The problem is, it's not, it's not like a paved lot with lines, it's, they're just gravel lots, and people, we have a challenge with people, and it's not, it's kind of a goofy shape, so people park goofy ways, and, you know, sometimes we have to have rangers or staff out there directing people how to park correctly so we can maximize the amount of vehicles in those locations.
And the distance from that location to this launch point?
Hiking, it's probably about a mile and a half, so that's why people tend to go on the Falls Trail hike, which is popular. This is the closest hike from this location to the Falls Loop. So if they started in the middle, you know, out over at your guys' park, or in the center of Clayton, they're going to add about another mile to a mile and a half, you know, distance. So they're always going to look for the shortest distance to hike from.
Given that they're already on a hike--
One way, correct, one way.
If they're already hiking though, right?
Correct, yeah, you'd think that adding additional mileage wouldn't be bad, but yeah, three miles, it'd be an adding additional three miles, yeah.
Because I've hiked from both, I think I mapped it on walking, it's like, it's a mile as the crow flies, so--
Yeah. We get different user groups, right? You get families with their kids that want to hike a short distance, you get, we have hikers that hike 11 mile, you know, big, huge loops in the park, and, you know, we have trail runners that run 100 miles in a day, so, you know, it's just, it varies on the users that we have, so.
Any other questions?
I guess, I'll ask the question directly. You said that Google is a state park's partner--
Correct.
And they could be contacted and asked, will you make sure that that happens?
I can do that, yes, for sure.
And let us know, and maybe copy us on that--
Yes.
And let them know what you've heard tonight, and that this really is a big problem. And if we can get them to take that off, I think that could go a long way to lowering the, I mean, it's only one, but Google's one of the biggest ones.
Yeah.
There are a lot of people who know about it, but there is turnover too, and if we can move some of the responsible folks over to a different one, maybe that'll help. Anyway, very good.
Great, thank you. Any other, go ahead.
I've got lots of comments.
Wait, are we still on public comment?
Any other questions for--
Pardon me? No, no, I don't have any questions for him, I got comments relative to the issue.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you, and we may, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So let's start with Councilmember Diaz, do you want to start?
Well, wait, do you have to close public comment first?
I think I closed public comment, but if he did--
I didn't know if that guy was awesome.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead, Councilmember Diaz.
First of all, I want to thank all of the residents for coming out here. I know this is an ongoing issue, I've talked to Dan Walsh on this on a couple of occasions, so I know, and I've been out there and I've seen it, and I sincerely appreciate everybody coming out and bringing it further along. Just some knee-jerk reactions for me. It sounds to me like one of the simplest things to do initially is maybe just paint the curbs there on the driveways red. I don't know if that stops the people from blocking your driveway, but it certainly would be the first step, it seems to me. Secondly, improved signage, and I don't know what the signs should say, but it's got to say something that gets their attention. Now, to the public offenses, that's a crime. And in today's environment with these things, you can't go anywhere without getting your photograph taken. I would start photographing people if they're urinating in your front yard, get their photograph, get their license plate number, and turn it over to the police department so they can do something about it. That's one of the sure ways of getting people's attention. If they get cited for public urination, that'll be the first and last time they'll do that in Clayton, I'll tell you. Yeah, so recording their license plates, I think it'd be another way, because again, we have a very limited police force, and yeah, they're doing some extra patrol down there on weekends and holidays, but still, in many cases, they have higher priority items in order to take care of the other, the other things that go on in this city. And this Prop 68 money sounds like something that would be worthwhile to sort of offset the cost of what the city might incur. So just some suggestions that popped out of my head, and, you know, and I wouldn't confront anybody that doesn't want to give up their right to, they think they're parking in front of your driveway, but just take their license plate down, call the police department, and then have them handle it from there.
Okay, thank you.
Unless they're blocking the driveway, what's the complaint?
They're blocking the driveway.
No, unless they're blocking the driveway, like if they're just parking there, there's no violation, right?
But if it was, if there was red painting on both sides of that driveway, then that's a clear indication that you don't park there. And if you do, then the police department has the authority to issue either a parking citation--
Yeah.
Or if they don't want to move the car, tow it.
Okay. Councilmember Wolf.
Well, I, you know, first of all, I got a point of clarification. Did you say that it was a seasonal, is this a seasonal issue, is this ongoing?
Year-round.
It's year-round.
On a Friday weekend, it's ours.
I went down there last Sunday or the Sunday before, and it was, it was quite loaded. I have a lot of concerns about this whole issue, because it's going, I do feel for the residents, and I applaud your civility that you haven't had any physical altercations with these people, and come close, but at least, at least you're not saying that you've had any, and I applaud that. I'm worried about moving this issue down to other places, and I think that, and I wasn't here on the council in May, so is the signs, are the signs a permanent fix?
Yeah.
Or was that a pilot program to just see how it went, or--
There's concrete holding them into the ground.
Yeah, I know they're there, I was just wondering if this is just a test to see if this was working, yes and--
You put the signs in, they went in like June, if it gets there, nobody's there at that point, they don't come back until like September, October.
I see.
That's why they only got 37 sites, and believe me, you guys are doing great job, mopping down all the time, I see you guys in like the middle of the night cruising up and down our street, we appreciate it, nothing gets peed, okay?
So right now, right now, though, if they're parking in front of your houses, they're, like Councilmember Juan said, there is no actual violation as long as they're not parking in the driveway, so it's difficult to call the police when they're not, when they're not violating anything. This is a very complicated issue for us. I think, I think we have to do a study here, to find out, a pilot program anyway, to find out what the solution is. For instance, if we were to, and I know what you want, okay? But if we were to look at the possibility of one-hour parking only, 5:00 AM to 5:00 PM with residents, unless you're permitted, unless the residents have a, what could be a complimentary permit for residents, and that would eliminate the hiking people from parking there, because it's going to take you longer than an hour to go wherever you're going. We would, I think then we would need to do the same type of thing over on Mount Air Parkway, and probably Rialto and El Malino and everywhere else, and that may be the solution, as in, on a short-term pilot basis, I'd be willing to take a look at something like that. I don't think the speed bumps, that's the other thing I wanted to find out. Where is the speeding taking place? Is it going further down on Regency Drive?
I've done it.
Because, pardon me?
I've done it.
You've done it?
Yeah.
Oh, well, there's your problem. I'm sorry.
It is actually very easy--
He needs to come, can you come up to the microphone? Because this is being broadcast.
Ask somebody to come up, if you want to--
Okay.
There's a whole part of Regency that you're not seeing--
Right.
Which is pretty blind.
Sure.
It's quite easy to actually speed down that way.
Past Rialto, though.
Past Rialto, exactly.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
I am agreeance, being one of those people, that a speed bump would probably be helpful, as unsightly as it may be.
Keep out of his property.
Okay, well, see--
How much is your life worth, man?
Okay.
Stop speeding, brother.
Hold on. So hold on.
I'm only that one alone.
Hold on.
I get it, so that was basically the question, so thank you very much. And as far as the speed bump is concerned, if I was living there, that might not be what I would want, but again, this is, this is where you live, I don't, I don't live there. Speed bump may be something that, that would be a possibility there. But I think we need, as a group up here, we need to come to some kind of an agreement as to what is a viable test program, if you will. Because right now, the state land, the Mount Diablo State Park is willing to try some things. We've tried some things as a council, or the other council did with the signage, and that seems to be somewhat working. Is that right?
No.
No, okay?
Can't read it.
There you go. So to come up with a permanent solution that is fair to everybody on both sides of that canyon, I'm not in favor personally of putting up a wall, a barrier, a fence, whatever you want to call it.
You're a waste of energy.
I know, no, I'm not, I'm not in favor of a $5 billion wall. But I, I just think that, I just think that, I just think we need to, we need to take a look at what's fair for both sides of that canyon and for everybody in the surrounding area, and also, we have to take a long-term look at the rest of Clayton and where this may happen as well. So it's going to take us a while to come to some kind of an agreement, I think, but I feel for you, and I certainly want to work with all of you and with us to come up with a viable solution. Because when I went down there on Sunday, and I met you down there, it was, it was pretty packed.
I mean, I've been on that trail, I've been on that trail a number of times, it's crazy how busy it is. I don't, I don't think this is simply an enforcement problem, like we said, if there's, if people are parking, there's no enforcement to be had, even if people are parking bumper to bumper all the way down Regency, all the way up to Marsh Creek. I mean, that's legal as it stands, so there's, it's not really about enforcement at that point. And, you know, the officers are great, they'll respond to calls, they'll patrol, but there's, there's not enough of them, they're not going to be stationed there the whole time. I don't, I don't think this is just about littering or blocking driveways, that's clearly a problem, but if that, I don't think that's all it is. It's not just about better signage either. I don't think no amount, or just even people having more consideration, you know, you can take down some sites, but you can't take down the internet, and no amount of consideration mitigates this parking problem that essentially blocks the entire street a large portion of the year. I think it's, it's clearly a quality of life issue, and I think that definitely action is needed. You know, the status quo that we have now, it's not sense, I have no interest in a fence either, I think that's, to me, that would be a non-starter. But definitely something that limits parking in some way. I thought about it, you know, I said, what I, you know, what I enjoy, having cars from all outside the area, outside of Clayton, taking up every single available parking space in front of my house all the time, you know, along with the incident foot traffic noise and other things that come along with that, I would, I think that'd be intolerable to me, that would be awful. I think this is really an issue of diffused benefits for the users, but concentrated costs for the residents, and they're the ones who are bearing the brunt of it, I don't think that's, that's the way to go. The vehicle code allows us to do permanent parking if we want to. It explicitly says that this is something that's contemplated within, so the state says that yes, if you want to do that, we can do that. I think that's something that we should consider. I would, you know, right now, we're not saying that, let's do that right now, right? We're saying, let's see if we want to direct staff to take action on doing something. I think that pushing the congestion to other parts of the city is probably the worst negative of doing anything, so that needs to be addressed. But, you know, if this becomes a concentrated issue in other areas, like it currently is in Regency, then I wouldn't have any problem expanding whatever solution that we come to for Regency to other areas, that's fine, like, you know, for the benefit of the residents of Clayton. You know, I, I think, you know, so what I, what I was thinking was, you know, we could designate certain areas to be permit parking during certain hours of the day, either on weekdays and weekends, or even maybe just weekends. And then residents could have guest passes and whatnot, similar to how other cities do it. I think, I read the permit parking plans in, I think, three other cities, and it was, it was of similar nature. I think I would leave the room at the end of Regency here as available parking, you know, outside the permit zone, just so that you do allow people to come and still enjoy the park and park if they want, they have to compete for spaces. I think you can, you can get about 20 cars there, give or take. And so if we leave that alone, and then that area on the east side of Regency, near the old seminary, there's room for probably about another 20 cars there as well. You know, I think if we make temporary permits available for all the residents of Clayton, then it doesn't, it doesn't crowd out any of the residents of the city, and then what it really does is target folks from out of town who overwhelm the capacity of the street. I think that would attempt at least to alleviate the congestion and the quality of life issues for the residents. It still continues to provide a limited number of parking for any non-permit holder, so it's trying to meet those needs as well. And it provides an avenue so that the rest of the city can still utilize the space. And then the details of how that would work, I would leave to staff to craft a plan, but that's the contours of what I was thinking.
Can I ask a question of staff, of the chief or of the staff? When a citation is issued for something like this, for parking, whatever it is, what is the revenue to-- to the city? How much of that goes to, to the city?
The revenue of a citation?
From the, from the paid citation, how much of that goes to the city?
Very little.
Very little, right?
Yeah, a few dollars.
Yeah, thank you.
Julie, do you want to go next?
Sure. There is no good solution to this. There's no good solution at all. And it is a problem, and trust me, I am sympathetic, because I live four houses away from Mount Diablo Elementary School. So six times a day, every day there's school. I have crowds of people turning around in my driveway, some of them even going through my circle driveway, and blocking my driveway. So I get it. It's not generally for hours at a time, although today we did have some event going on at the school, and there were people all the way up the block that were there all day long, and the garbage trucks didn't like it at all. So I get it. And just full disclosure, I had to sign a disclosure agreement. They had to tell me that there was parking outside my house every day when I bought the house. So I was fully aware of it, and it still didn't stop me, because I thought the benefits were, were above the detriment. But I get, I get the problem. I guess I'm really concerned with, with pushing this from one area to another, and making it the whole town. I can't see expanding this to half of our, our city to have permit parking. Regency, Rialto are directly affected right now. So is Mount Air Parkway. So is the area further down El Molino. You've got several courts on the Regency side that front on it. There are several that front on it from Dana Hills. There are areas in Peacock Creek where people go hiding, hiking. You know, there, there are a lot of areas around town, because we live in a beautiful area. I, I think, you know, folks who have sports fields or public pools and things like that in their neighborhood deal with these issues all the time, and, and there is no good solution. Reducing the publicity could help. Trying to get it off of social media will help some for people who haven't yet discovered it. I realize there are a lot of people who already know about it. On the other hand, there are, for the most part, a lot of folks who are pretty considerate people, who may consider on being appealed to, that maybe it's worth the effort to go to a different entrance, or park a little further away where they're not parking directly in front of someone's house. I know you're shaking your head, no, no, no. But I, I get it. There is no good solution. But there are some, some thoughts here. I'm, I'm not convinced that permit parking works unless you stripe certain spaces in front of everyone's house. Because unless you make a certain spot in front of everyone's house that is permit parking only, you leave your parking space and it's gone when you come back. And, and I don't, well, I mean, you can't guarantee that a spot will be there just because you have a parking permit, unless there is a striped space. And I'm not sure how that works for, number one, expense to the city and maintenance and liability and some of those things. Those are things that staff would have to look at. But I, I am concerned that either that or, I mean, even if you just take to parking in the street all the time with your parking permit, still you leave home and there may not be a spot there unless you have a designated spot. Clearly, when people block a driveway or a portion of a driveway, that's against the law, that's in the vehicle code. You don't have to paint it red to be able to enforce that. People are parking in front of fire hydrants right now. They clearly don't care whether it's red or not. I, I am hopeful that our partners with the state parks and with Save Mount Diablo can help us to steer new people to the other locations, and they can discourage this. I don't know whether we can get volunteers out there to talk to the residents or something, or volunteer to be out there on the, the weekend to talk to the hikers and encourage them to behave. I'm not sure I would want to take that on if I was a volunteer. That's probably not the safest thing to do, given the attitudes that some of the residents have experienced. I, you know, I feel bad about it. The, the speed bumps, I think, is not a good solution, particularly because it's a steep hill. We have had this experience over in Oakhurst over the years, when residents have asked for speed bumps, and the fire department will tell us that it slows their trucks down by as much as five to 10 minutes because of speed bumps coming to a home on the other side of the speed bumps. And, and, you know, personally, I wouldn't want to be the one who is having a heart attack that needs the fire department to get there. If, if they were getting slowed down by the, the speed bumps. That's, that's just what happens with those big rigs. So, right now, I am not in favor of a fence. I think it just moves the problem down to another street, and another street, and another street, and pretty soon we're fencing off the park. And that's not a solution that really is viable, in my opinion. I've got notes here. I'm trying to read, see if I've missed anything. I do think that going on some of the apps that are out there and pleading with folks can't hurt. There might be a few people who decide not to impose on the neighborhood. It's, it's not a good solution for anybody. But I, I think that we need to at least give it a shot. I agree with Jim. Maybe more visible signage will be helpful. But if people are going to disrespect the neighborhood, they're going to disrespect the neighborhood, and signage isn't going to make a difference. I don't know. The only thing I can think of that makes any sense at all is perhaps striping one spot in front of somebody's house, per house. But I, I think it's going to be an enforcement nightmare, honestly. So, I don't know. But, you know, I, I would ask staff to do some more research on, on whether that actually can work.
So, I mean, I wouldn't.
Let me add my two cents in first, and then we'll come to bring it back. So, I do definitely emphasize with the whole situation. So I live in Regency Meadows, which is nearby. So my family and I very often walk up Regency, and then we don't access the park as much, but go along the Clayton Trails from there. So I'm there fairly frequently. And then this weekend specifically, because I knew this item was coming up, I was out in your neighborhood, I think, four different times, spent probably half an hour each time. And I was literally counting spots as I was going through and making my notes, counting not only the actual parking spots along the street, although they're not spots, they're just curb, but then also counting also driveway spots and how much was being used and so forth. So, to me, this is sort of two issues. One is parking adequacy overall. Is there adequate parking? Is there a concern for adequate parking, and what can we do about it? And then the other one is sort of people behaving badly. The people behaving badly, people leaving trash behind, blocking driveways, I think those are obviously unacceptable. But I'm, I don't know that a permit parking program will fix that. If people aren't respectful now of sort of what I think most of us should think are obvious things, that you don't pee on other people's lawns and whatnot, I don't know that a permit program will fix that in itself. But, so in terms of the parking adequacy question, so this kind of brings me back a little bit to land use stuff, which is, and part of the, and I'll just lay it out there, because it is what it is. You know, part of the thing is when we build developments, obviously, we can't, you know, predict what, how conditions change. But we typically want to build development so that the parking needs are served by the development itself. So for example, I know these houses were built mid-1970s, but I think the parking requirements back then were the same as they are today. So they were required to have four parking spaces per unit, which is two in the garage and two in the driveway. And I, I fully recognize, I, half of my garage is storage too, then I only use one garage spot, and then I, the rest of our cars are in the driveway. So I get it, you know, that from a practical perspective, most people don't actually use four spots on their, their thing. But that's, that's one thing, because I think when we start talking about parking adequacy, then it brings into, we do have neighborhoods where we don't have any, very little on-street parking. If you think about Oakhurst, where we have a lot of the duplexes, and this is on my morning carpool route with my high schoolers, some of those streets, and I literally counted this morning as I was waiting for one person, one street, for example, had 18 housing units, and everybody had two and two parking spots on their property. And then there were six guest parking spots on that street, and you couldn't park on the street alone. So between those 18 houses, they only had their garages and their driveways, and then six spots they shared among the 18 houses. So I'm a little bit concerned about if we start using on-street parking, if there's an expectation that we need to be able to, you know, that four parking spots aren't enough. So that's a little bit of a concern, because I don't know what it means then for other neighborhoods that don't have that even. In terms of the, in terms of the permit program, so I have thought about this hard, quite, or quite a bit overall. I'm concerned about the president for sure in terms of other neighborhoods. There are anybody like elementary school, middle school, people living close to downtown when we have festivals. So there, there are a lot of neighborhoods where some of these impacts do happen. I get it that it doesn't happen as frequently. I think in the Regency Drive, this is sort of a very frequent, if the weather's nice, you're facing the impacts. It's not like we have festivals in downtown X number of times a year. So it is more frequent. But we do have other neighborhoods too that do, do have these kind of impacts. I am, I think you mentioned the idea of maybe providing temporary permits to all Clayton residents throughout all time, all of the city. And I see that as a huge administrative effort. And I'm, I'm concerned that we are then hiring a full-time parking permit person in our city. And I don't know that, so that concerns me a little, quite a bit. On the permit program overall, obviously, it would be the first of its kind in Clayton, and if it is, so be it. There's obviously, there's a little bit of probably bigger admin cost to staff than we would want to recuperate from, from the residents, because, you know, there's probably a learning curve as to how this would work. In terms of math, so one of the things I did this weekend too, is I counted sort of approximately all the on-street parking spaces. And they're not striped right now, so you, it's not like there's a fixed number. But I counted approximately how many cars you could fit on Regency Drive. So from my estimate, you know, the little end loop, you know, between the gate and where the houses end, I think that probably accommodates about 25 cars. And then I counted about 78 spots from that point until Rialto Drive, or the, where the seminary drive starts at 85 Regency or so. So, so from a numbers and math perspective, we have 25 plus 80 spots. So that's about 100, a little bit more than 100. And we have 27 homes on Regency alone. So we don't have that many spots per house. I mean, I guess we would have three per house under that logic. Then the other, so I guess my bigger concerns about the permit program is, I'm concerned that we'll just push the problem somewhere else. It's going to go down Regency Drive, it's going to go to Dana Hills or somewhere else. I'm also a little bit concerned about privatizing street parking and what, kind of having that message and precedent. So in terms of different solutions, the fence, I don't think, I think that's a no-starter. And I heard a lot of residents themselves say that they didn't like that. And I'm not a particular fan of any fences or walls of any kind either. In terms of parking lot, I think, you know, that's, you know, humongous cost to add a parking lot. I think, and I think that would only incentivize the uses of that trailhead more. So I don't think that's a solution either, and would be probably very prohibitive from cost perspective. In terms of the people behaving badly, we talked about maybe we could add trash cans. But again, I think that just encourages people to use it more. So I'm a little bit concerned about that. Could we add parking meters in there, for example, I guess? But that doesn't help the locals, the neighborhood in any way either. I agree on the signage. I saw the signage do, maybe it could be a little bit bigger and therefore increase visibility. But again, if people aren't paying attention, then they're not paying attention. I, I do appreciate the, the effort by the superintendent to, you know, contact Google and try to get it off the Google Maps. And I know that's just one, one, one map and one website. And I think that's at least a start in that direction. I like the idea of painting the, painting the driveway curb wingtips red, so that at least enforces the message that you should not be encroaching on the driveway. I do like that idea, and it's extremely low cost from that perspective. What else I had? So I mean, I think, so here, I guess what it comes down to me, I am, I do have concerns about the permit program. I mean, obviously, we could do it on some kind of pilot basis, only this street or something like that. I looked at other cities as well, and I know, for example, Orinda only has it on one street that's near BART station, because they're dealing with the people using the BART parking there. And it was very limited there. And I think Danville had only one area too, which was near their Sandermont High School. And it was extremely limited as well, and for certain school hours only. But I do have some concerns about the permit parking in the sense that it just kicks the problem down the road. And then the idea that it, it privatizes on-street parking. I would like to see, you know, if there could be more, you know, if we all collaboratively, we could have more efforts in terms of trying to work with whomever the stakeholders are, trying to see in these websites. And I know, I mean, like, do we post bad reviews on the websites that advertise? And I don't, you know, I think some of the residents have already tried that. So I don't know how far we can get that, to get there. I would be wondering if this, if it's worthwhile to have any kind of stakeholder meeting where we do have the state park involved, where we do have the Save Mount Diablo, if they have any further ideas like they suggested. So I, I'm a little bit lost. I'm a little, very on the fence. Horrible word now. But I think it's a very tough situation. And I don't know that I have the solution to that. But I do have concerns about the permit program.
I mean, pushing, pushing the problem somewhere else is a real concern. But we only need to push it far enough so people don't park there anymore as a deterrent. If you make it far enough, then the other parking places will be more viable, like the designated parking area. So if you have a one-mile hike, if you push it out a mile, no one's going to park there anymore. Or at least it'll mitigate it for some. The, the idea of taking down the information from websites, I think it sounds nice, but I think that is ultimately futile. I mean, you can't fight the internet, like, and you'll have some organizations that are, you know, they have large followings, and they'll try and work it. But there's probably, for every member of one of those, there's probably 100 others that don't go to those things. And what are they going, I mean, there's no enforcement mechanism. So you're really just asking for the good graces of strangers to not behave badly. But it's really not even behaving badly, because parking on the street's legal. So that's not even bad behavior. It's not disrespecting the neighborhood. If they're just parking where they're supposed to park, there's absolutely nothing disrespectful about that, because they're just following the rules as they're, as they are. Painting the curves red in, just around the houses is, is, it does something. I mean, it limits, it probably deters people from parking in front of people's driveways. But it doesn't limit, but that means the residents can't park there either. And then you've further restrict, we would further restrict available parking spaces, and that would exacerbate the bumper-to-bumper issue where every other space would be taken. I mean, that, that helps the driveway blocking problem, but it doesn't help, it's not a holistic thing that helps the overall problem. I don't think you need designated spots for a permit parking plan, because... I don't think you need designated spots for a permit parking plan because it's a free-for-all for anyone who has a permit within the plan and then you're talking about just the, just the neighborhood. And for that matter, I think that the neighborhood, because, because of the overwhelming support from the neighborhood, I think that they would love that. So yeah, they would, there's no guaranteed spot in front of your house, maybe your neighbor takes it, but maybe you park at your neighbor's house. But either way, you've limited the population for which you're competing with spots and then at that point, I don't think it would be a real issue. We already have areas, like you, you mentioned that you live near the school and there's a traffic, I drop off at the school every day, I know there's a lot of traffic, but we already have, because that was a problem, we started limiting traffic around the school during certain hours. When you're heading on Mitchell Canyon going south, south of Morris.
Yep.
You cannot turn east on, towards the school during the school hours. It's, it's an illegal turn. And there's officers once in a while when it becomes a problem, they post out there just to make sure people remember that the giant sign is there that's impossible to read because it has like 12 lines on it. But there's, and then like on the folder that Mr. Weiner just gave us, there's, I don't even know if those are legal, but there are posted no parking signs, right? It just says no state parking, no state park parking there also. I don't know if those are sanctioned or not.
They have no enforcement.
They look nice.
They do.
But, you know, places outside, like you mentioned, oops, sorry. The staging area in your Alamo has it, you mentioned the places outside of BART has it, a lot of places near schools have it. It's not something that you do by default, but it's something that you do in response to a changing fact pattern that says this is a problem and we should address it. You know, I, I think that, I think it's a good idea to explore and it's not like something that we could execute now anyways, but it is something that we could give direction to, to say, let's look at a program that would have these goals in mind and see what can be crafted so that we can discuss it further when there's a real plan. Rather than us like saying, hey, what about this or that or this? You know, we've talked about a lot of ideas. If we give direction to staff to say, hey, can you come up with a real plan? And then we could discuss the merits of something specific. That's what I would recommend.
Yeah, and I don't think, I don't know that we're going to walk away tonight with a solution and I anticipate that. And I think we, I'm happy to explore further any options. I was just expressing that I do have some concerns at the very outset on the permit program and to the president that we're creating permit programs all around our city then at some point. So that's definitely a concern. I have nothing against exploring this more, but I would like to really try to explore all the options. And like I said, the permit program itself will not, you know, the permit program still relies on people obeying it.
Well, no, because...
No, if you have a hiker who parks in there, they will park at their own risk of getting sighted.
They'll get towed.
They could get towed, but...
And they'll only do it once.
But the problem is that we have had, we've heard from many neighbors that there are also people who block driveways. That's illegal.
Well, they'll get towed too. I mean, we'll be a towing Mecca. I mean, once you do it a little bit, it'll take care of itself. And then the residents of the city, or the residents of the street will be the first, the vanguard on enforcement. They'll say, hey, we know that now there's a rule that violates, now we could report it. You know, it gives them a tool to alleviate their own problems.
I agree that, certainly the, the, trying to take it down from the websites, I agree. It's a really futile at this point. And, and my background is in, in marketing and creative direction and PR and I, I would go the other direction to make sure that...
People know.
People know that this is, there are tickets being issued, people being towed, whatever we're going to be doing so that it gets out there, hey, they start spreading, we're, don't, don't park there anymore.
Yeah, trying to hide it, I think you'll have the Streisand effect, it'll never, it will not work.
No.
If I may add, regarding the speed bump issue, and I agree with Councilmember Pierce, they are relatively ineffective and the fire department would push back. I live off of a court on, off of Eagle Peak Avenue and I'm here to tell you, when they clear that last speed bump, they hit the gas heading down to Oakhurst. And you take your life in your hand trying to come out there.
And some of them launch off of it for fun.
Right. And then, as, as, in terms of restricted and limited parking, parking, my son lives in Concord, about two blocks from the North Concord BART station. They have an ongoing problem there with parking on the street. That limited parking works very well. Let's ask our friends in Concord to give us some indication how that works and how to administer it because they've, they've had several years of dealing with it at this point.
Yeah, anytime you have a point of interest that people are going to flock to that overwhelms it, it's, it's, it's a solution that's used really well. It kills like that type of parking.
Well, I guess one of the things we'd have to think about then, and I would ask staff to, to do some looking at this, where would we have to enforce this to make sure that we're not just kicking it down the road? Because immediately, it's not just Regency and Rialto, it's obviously Mount Air Parkway. I mean, that's got to be done at exactly the same time or all we're doing is pushing it across the canyon. And frankly, that's an easier incline to go down than the one off of Regency by far.
It is. It's much, it's a much more gradual ingress, but it's harder to get to though because instructions to drive is like, yeah, it's, you have to drive through more neighborhoods, that's all.
True. But you know what? If somebody goes and finds out they can't park on Regency, they're going to look across the canyon and find it because they can do that. So I think it's, it's important that we look at where this would be. I'm, I'm really, truly worried about the other cul-de-sacs on down off of El Molino and off of other areas in Dana Hills. It's, it's going to become a ripple effect. And unless we make all of those areas verboten, moving them a third of a mile is not going to be enough to stop somebody.
How about a mile?
Well, then you're blocking off all of those areas, all the way down past Marsh Creek Road. Do you want a permit program for two entire subdivisions? That seems a little ridiculous.
Yeah, I think it makes it less of a concentrated problem. I mean, and, and to the extent that the residents in those neighborhoods are supportive, then I would be supportive if that's what, if that's what improves their quality of life.
Let me, let me add two points to that too. So if we go all the way through Regency, through Marsh Creek Road, we have a couple things we're butting. We have a middle school there, we have Clayton Community Park, and yes, those do sometimes spill over to Regency when you have events. We also have our, I think it's our only dog park or maybe we have other...
Dog park is there.
Only dog park is, and there, it is extremely frequent by, because I drive by this every single day.
There's one in Indian Wells too.
That people, when they use the dog park, they will, they will park right there along Regency Way. So do we want to prevent people from using the dog park? There are ripple effects, anything we do here will have some impact on us.
There's no residents there? You could have five cars, 10 cars there, it's built up.
Yeah, there's no residents.
But if we prevent, but if we prevent parking from all of, all of Regency, that's what I'm saying.
I would, I would do it only where there's houses. So like here on the left where there's no houses, then I would say, yeah, go park there, that's fine.
So the last 25 U turns.
You could get 25 cars there.
But then we're still going to get people going there.
The people isn't the biggest problem, the blocking every single parking spot on the street, that's the problem that we're trying to solve.
And, and some of the bad behavior.
The bad behavior will get limited when you limit the...
Limit the amount of people?
The amount of people. You have less of a concentrated problem.
And if you do move them down...
Yeah, if you go up further around Seminary, you could fit another 20, 25 cars.
You could, yeah.
And if you move them down as far as, as far as El Molino, then, then you're very close to the community park, parking lot. I'd be very interested in trying something or taking a look at something that would mitigate this problem and see what it actually creates for ourselves.
If you allow a little bit, then the people can compete for spaces, just like they do
So, so another, so if we, if we restricted whatever portion of Regency, but we still allowed it at the very end where you have whatever 25 spaces, I mean, don't we still get people driving down there during the U-turns?
It's less.
Think proactively about saying, yes, you can park here. Because it's going to be domain.
Yeah, and on the sign that says no parking this way, you could say, here's where the designated parking spot is.
It's a complicated issue. And, and like I said, we're not, we're not going to solve it tonight, but I'd be in favor of, of taking a look at something, having, having staff explore what the best options are for us.
I mean, they need at least some contours, right?
Something, yeah. I, you know, I, I think the permit program to me is problematic. I think it's easy, I don't know what the enforcement is going to be and how this is going to work, but certainly taking a look at it, I'm, I'm in favor of looking at it.
Yeah, I don't have anything against looking at it. I'm just, I'm just, I think, thinking myself three steps ahead in terms of where do you draw the boundaries? And I, you know, if you look at Regency Drive, you know, we do have the end and it sounds like neighbors don't necessarily use that end. We have the, the streets along the old Seminary, we have the, when Regency goes down, there's a lot of area there, a lot of, a lot of linear footage where people don't have houses. But still, I'm, I'm...
Trying to split it a little bit.
I know, I know, I'm still concerned about just pushing the problem down the road, whatever that is, pushing it onto Dana Hills.
Literally.
And across the canyon.
And across the canyon. Although, although across the canyon, one of the residents said is already happening.
Oh, it's been a problem for years across the canyon.
So I guess we'd have to include that area as well.
Yeah, you have to.
Mayor, if I might, some staff thoughts. Number one, I agree with Councilmember One, the council, city council needs to provide staff with some parameters. Number two, in my former life as the Glendora City Manager, I sat as the Chair of the Traffic Commission. I can tell you with unwavering, you know, testimony that permit parking starts as a small circle and then expands in concentric circles. It's inevitable. So I don't know what the radius will be. I mean, you indicated, Mayor Catalano, you live in Regency Meadows, I live in Regency Meadows, but if we go out a mile, you know, I'm going to have, I don't need permit parking in front of my street. Secondly, we know that there's a problem in here. We know however, that speeding is not just restricted to the street. So speed humps and speed bumps are not what I would support to you. Of course, you could go ahead and do that, but that would be unprecedented in the city for all the safety reasons that we've outlined. Third, yes, there are successful parking limitations, parking programs in other communities. They also have the ability to enforce. And I think there's going to be, I've, I've heard sentiments and as we've been working over this at the staff level, that, well, there's going to be a certain number of people who will obey just by a sign saying permit parking only. That's true. Not all will however, and what will become learned if our police department is not able to respond and respond in a fashion because they're on other priority calls, that also will become known. I'm not saying that problem's insurmountable, we can certainly try that, but we ought to be wary of the fact, and certainly the residents, if we go with permit parking, need to understand that if they call, hey, someone without a permit is not, is parking in front of my house, it may take the police department a time period in which to respond because that is actually a, you know, what we would call a no-crime, low-priority call. Not to the residents, but to our police department that might be handling other instances. However, you know, I, I've been listening carefully and the consensus kind of seems to be moving back and forth. One of the things that you might consider as a council is appointing yourself a subcommittee to maybe work with staff on this. A subcommittee can help to vet that out because we as staff have already thought about some of these ideas and we've brought to you some, some things that could work, but they aren't perfect. Do-nothing is not perfect. I know in our meeting that we had with the Park Superintendent, Mr. Garing, and, which was a good meeting, but they didn't have any really good ideas at that time as well. Having grown up in the Southern California area, I can tell you that the city of Anaheim, while they like having Disneyland there, this is the analogy I used, they, they don't say, oh, that's okay Disneyland, we will take on your parking problems. And in some ways, that shift is occurring here and I think because there's good intent, goodwill on part of the elected officials and the community work together, we're having to deal with a spillover problem that to a certain large portion is because of the presence of the state park. I do not believe in my knowledge of hikers, in the very nature of the hikers, I don't think that necessarily they get off of a six-hour climb or a hike on the mountain and then go down and have pizza in our downtown. That's just not the kind of nature of the hiker. So it's not really what I would consider as a professional city manager, an economic boon to have this in our city. It's a quality of life however, not only as we have heard from the residents on the street, but some of the people, and many of the people parking on Regency Drive and Mount Air Parkway are Claytonians. They're our own residents. And there are some people here that will go down there and do that, others will walk. So at first blush, it sounds like, well, this ought to be easy, but it really isn't. It has a lot of tentacles, it has a lot of different pathways. So if, if, you know, the thought is, well, you want to do something, in the meantime, you know, have them work on the social media, that'd be great. A subcommittee or an ad hoc committee for this would be wonderful and I think at that time we could draw in Mr. Weiner and then also, you know, other stakeholders, say, Mount Diablo and the state park, and really try to work out what, what might be an acceptable solution that no one's access to the state park is deterred.
Okay, thank you. Let me, let me see if I can pull, pull us a little bit in terms of direction to staff. So in terms of fence, are we all saying that's out, right? That's out?
No fence.
I'm opposed to fence.
Speed pumps?
No.
I, I'm not in favor.
No.
I'm neutral.
Neutral? Jim?
They want a speed bump.
Yeah, I don't have to drive on every day. If the, if 100% of the residents said we want speed bumps, I'd be more in favor, but I'm somewhat neutral.
What about Jim?
No, he said no.
No.
Speed bumps.
Let's, I think, I think we're no on speed bumps. What about the signage? Do we want staff to look if we could do more with signage?
Improve signage that's visible and readable.
So that's an easy thing to at least look at, you know, can we do more with signage? What about the red curb wingtips? And I think we're just talking one to two feet on each side. Do we want staff to look into that?
That's a very...
I think that's, I don't, I don't think that's a good one.
It can be, oh, a lot of these things can be in combination with others, but even if you have permit program, there's a potential that people can block driveways.
But I guess the reason why I think that's not a great idea is because the problem is limited parking being consumed by other people. So by making it red, you've consumed parking already because now that it's been eliminated as available parking. So it exacerbates the problem by limiting the supply of available parking.
But it's usually a foot or two.
Yeah, so you've limited a foot or two times all the houses. That doesn't address the problem that's being stated. That's, that's how I see it.
What about others?
So the idea of what, just so I'm clear of what you're saying, by painting the tip of the driveway red, do we stop the people that are parking over the driveway or we...
Yes, but you also stop the residents too.
How?
They can't park there either.
Well, they, no one is legally able to park there.
I can park in my own driveway.
In your, in your driveway, but not overlapping your driveway. The, the, the street tip right at the end of your driveway.
Right.
If, like in the picture that they gave us.
I understand, on the curb or against the curb on the street.
Right. And he's parked this foot into your driveway. That, that foot is illegal anyway, but if they saw the red tip, they'd be just pushed back that one foot to a legal parking space.
But then I couldn't park there. As a resident, if I was a resident, then I couldn't park there either. Because it's red, right?
In the red?
No one can.
Yeah, exactly.
But you couldn't park there anyway even if it wasn't red.
Here, take a look at this.
You can, a resident that lives there can park that way.
This tip?
Yeah.
You can't park there.
If you live there?
No, you can't.
No. Who are you blocking?
You're, you're blocking the driveway.
You're blocking yourself.
Yep, but you're still not allowed to park in the driveway.
Chief leave already.
The chief is here. The chief is here. The chief has, has arrived.
Excuse me. The answer is you do not need to paint the tips going down to the apron of the driveway to be enforceable. You cannot block any portion of the driveway apron, whether it's painted or not.
Right.
Okay. I should stop doing that, then.
Even if it's your own property. For instance, if, if you, and a lot of people might, on weekends or whatnot, you might park in front of your own driveway.
All the time.
All the time. Doesn't mean you won't be cited, however. It's, it's not, it's not legal to do so.
But if they don't, if you don't want it?
Don't come to my house.
Aren't we just trying to throw some ideas out here?
Yeah, I think we're just trying to give direction to staff. So, so I don't know where we landed on the wingtips then, but
I guess it's a no.
I guess it's a no.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, okay. Then if we're thinking about some kind of pilot program, so then are we looking at having staff look at striping of the spaces along the street? Go ahead, come up.
Every permit parking that's out there just says, you have to have a permit to park in this area. You don't have to stripe anything off. All it means is you can park between A and B unless you have a permit. The people that park in front of our house have permits. It say B on it. You can't park in Berkeley in certain areas. So it doesn't, it doesn't make any, it just doesn't allow anybody but residents to park along whatever stretch of land that is. And then, like they said, all those land stretches that have no people there, we're fine with people parking there. We're fine with people parking around the seminary, which would be for those number of people that don't wanna pay the $5, can't pay the $5, whatever reason they wanna park there. It's to our, it's to allow us to be able to have parties and to have our quality of life back. I'm sorry, that was the whole thing.
We, we need, we need you to come to the mic.
Speak to the mic, Richard, speak to the microphone so we can get it recorded.
Real quick, once word gets out that those, there's restricted parking, those 20 websites that are listing Eric's address will put restricted parking here. And I, I do believe that will solve some of the problem right off.
Yeah. Mayor Catalano.
I just want to speak to the fact, well, not what Mr. Napper said about the ripple effect when you start the permit parking and it goes to a radius. Please realize that there are a lot of city assets that are focused in those neighborhoods because of the way the city started. So you're creating, if you have a ripple of permitted parking, you're creating some super citizens in the city of Clayton. I will be excluded from these assets. So please bear in mind, this is going to be an issue. This issue won't go away. You can't have super citizens. And I'm not saying that immediately. If you have the radius, if it trickles out, like the city manager has explained happens, then those with permit parking have access to the dog park closer to downtown. If you wanna walk on those trails, if you, well, no. If you wanna access Donner Canyon, which I do all the time, these are super citi-
Excuse me.
These are super citizens within Clayton because they have permitted parking closer to these assets. So please keep this in mind. It's, it will happen. It will be a real thing.
Okay, thank you. So we did close off public comment already, I'm sorry. So let me, Mr. Napper, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We know as staff how to sign this properly. You don't need to paint curbs. You don't need to do hash painting on the street. We even have signs that are somewhat similar, where they're up there and they say, no parking between these points. And that's what will be occurring. You know, it's in these arrows. Some people don't understand that. But they will certainly find out what that means.
Exactly.
And so that's what would happen. And, you know, my understanding, and I understand the point about the dog park, but the entrance to that dog park off of Regency Drive is a butts or is adjacent to some open space area. What I'm hearing individuals in the council saying is, in areas that are close or in front of homes, that's where you put no parking between these areas. The other areas leave open. And down at the end of the cul-de-sac, put signage up that says, you know, parking allowed this place, or parking, park at the south Mitchell Gate.
That's what the sign just said.
You know, so there can be some other directional options. So, you know, let us, we can work on the parking. We know how to.
That's my question. Does the staff have enough information so we can move forward on this? Do you think you can?
I don't know, we kinda like wanna stay here till 11 o'clock.
No, no, no. I mean, can you now take it from here?
Well, what I'm hearing, our concern, and, you know, as I indicated, is if you're gonna start on a pilot program, you need to tell us, are you going all the way to Regency Drive? And I understand when you say that, and you haven't mentioned as much, but I'd assume you're talking about Rialto Drive. But not, you know, are you gonna include the little, you know, all the way on Rialto Drive, all the way up to Regency Drive, then over on Mount Air Parkway, and how far up to go on that?
I'd like the subcommittee to work on that.
Yes.
Frankly, I, we can't do the whole map right now, but there are a lot of streets involved.
That's correct.
That need to be considered. And I'm, I mean, I heard quite a few of the residents talk about a single spot in front of their home, not the entire strip from one end of the houses to the other. So I'm not sure, you know, what the intent is. But I would welcome having a subcommittee of our council meet with staff and some of the neighbors to try to figure that out.
I think there's at least two people that talked about the single space. But the petition that was signed was the whole street. So that was what they had all, were all signatories to. Yeah. But I think the subcommittee is a good idea. I'd, I'd be gladly participate. I think to address that one comment earlier, though, that is, to limit to the rest of the city, I think, isn't, or to limit other residents of the city from utilizing the space, I think, is, is problematic as well.
That's why I'm saying, you want the whole street.
But that's, and that's why I'd say, like, if people are doing a hike, you usually know in advance. You go get a day permit that's like available to all the residents, and you're good.
But if we allow, let me just play that. If we allow our 4,000 household, 11,000 people to have a day permit, then we've eliminated what we're trying to achieve with the Regency Drive.
Potentially. If all the people come down there, yeah. But I think it'll eliminate-
We don't need all the people coming. We need 80 people to come.
Yeah, the out-of-town people.
It doesn't benefit the neighbors.
I, I think
I don't think the vehicle code will allow us to limit it to the entire city. The way it talks about it is to the adjacent residents and businesses. But we can work with the subcommittee. So I don't think we would be looking at a preferential city permit for city residents. We'd be limiting it to the areas you've defined and the adjacent residents.
Okay, so we need a subcommittee, I think. I just heard Jeff volunteer.
I volunteer.
I'll, I'll volunteer as well.
Go for it.
Happy to, happy to help.
Any objections?
You know, and it may not turn out the way that you all wanted to. But, but we're
Give it a shot.
We're gonna give it a shot.
Right.
Give it a shot.
So what would be, I think, our, so we've now appointed, I think, by, without objection, a subcommittee of Councilmember Wolf and Councilmember Juan. What would be our next step? I guess we've given staff some direction as well and look at, into things to look. Do we wanna have the committee meet and then bring it back at a later time? When they've had a chance to meet them?
Well, it's, it's a council It's a council ad hoc committee, but I would envision that members, key members and stakeholders would be invited. We would certainly outreach to, say, Mount Diablo and the State Park, and Mr. Weiner as a representative. And, you know, maybe even someone else who maybe not, isn't necessarily in full agreement with that. I mean, it's useful to hammer some of those ideas out.
Okay, so we'll leave it up to the subcommittee to convene amongst the two of them, but also to decide how you wanna, how you wanna reach out to other stakeholders.
Okay.
Okay? So I think, I think we're concluded with no action today, but we'll look for the subcommittee to come back to us and, you know, when we wanna calendar it for another time.
Okay, see you, we're gone.
Okay, thank you very much. We will continue, though.
Give the card to the city clerk here, she'll take it.
So our next item, let's see where we're at. The next item is item 10C. So this is the review and discussion of new state legislation for 2019 that is required. Mr. Napper, we could have a report or informational presentation from you.
Thank you, Mayor. Boy, sometimes this comes on late. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, sir.
You guys asked me to fill out a form?
Yeah, there's a blue card at the back. If you could please fill that and provide it to the city clerk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tell me you're gonna read the entire packet.
I am. I don't know why people are leaving. This is the most exciting item on the
I've been waiting for it all night.
I know you have. Please keep my mic hot back there, Larry, okay? Because I'm gonna talk now. We thought that, given the, you know, the last year and whatnot, you know, at least from the staff level, we thought there was some level of unacknowledgement or unrecognition that many of the items that the city council deals with, that staff brings forward, is not necessarily of our own doing, that we are arms of the state and in essence, we have to follow state laws. And so we thought that this would be an effective way of indicating, as we start the first of the year, that although the city incorporated in 1964 as a general law city, what that means is we are under the general law guidelines, regulations, and laws of the California Government Code. The California Government Code is controlled, if you will, by the state legislature and legislation that is signed by the governor. And that imparts many mandates, tasks, responsibilities, and obligations to local cities. At one point in time in the history of municipalities, general law cities were affected, and cities who were charter cities or created their own charters were exempt from state legislation that was imparted. However, the state has cured that, if you will. And now general law cities, obligations and responsibilities are also imparted unto charter cities. They're no longer exempt. The, the state legislature just writes that in. So this is, in some ways, you could title coming attractions. I, I know. And that's why we're wanting you, as members of the council, as well as members of the public, to know that last year was a very busy year for the state legislature. And there are a number of laws that have been enacted that, by the state legislature, that is a requirement now of cities. We will be enrolling these as we have the staff time available to do so. We will also be doing some of the things internally. We've already implemented some of them. However, to give you just a taste of coming attractions, I've asked each of the staff members to summarize the key legislation that the state adopted last year and what we will be dealing with in 2019. In addition, the legislation that was passed last year, the state legislature has come back into session. And it's been said oftentimes that cities are only safest when the legislature is not in session. And that is very true because already we're seeing in the first part of 2019 that many of the unhappy laws the state enacted, let's say, for housing and housing laws, are getting more and more restrict. Included in your agenda packet is a letter from the State Department of Housing and Community Development that indicated that because housing is such a crisis in the state of California, the lack thereof, that the Department of Housing and Community Development has specifically been given the tools, the statutory authority to require cities to enact the legislation, particularly regarding housing. You've already heard tonight, in one of the interviews, that an individual said he was aware of that, that the state is starting to tie transportation monies to cities that fulfill their housing element obligations and housing responsibilities. That's Senate Bill 1, transportation monies. And we do utilize that to repave our streets in town. Even more so, while we're going to tell you some of the unbearable laws that will be rolling forth, I'm hearing up in Sacramento, and Vice Mayor Pierce can probably confirm this, that the state's draconian hands, if you will, have even reached a point on housing, and listen very carefully, that they will take over the authority and permit by right affordable housing proposed by developers on idle or vacant lands of public agencies. Just give that some thought, what that means. So that's how serious the state is taking its approach to the housing. So no better way than to launch off with housing and land use planning. And I'll let Ms. Gentry go forth on that. Each department head will take a few moments. Mr. Mizuno will take the least amount of time. And we'll go forward from here. So, Mindy?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Good evening again. I thought I'd actually stand up and get some leg circulation going. So before launching into the laws that were placed in effect in 2018, I would be remiss if I didn't also mention the housing package that was passed in 2017, which was a series of high-profile laws that really started to mandate cities to make changes, by-right housing-type laws, as well as really beefing up the Housing Accountability Act, making it more difficult for cities and counties to deny housing projects. So 2018 was no different. The states continued its march forward at eroding local land use authority. And the message is, is clear from the state legislature that there really is this push from the urban cities to make suburban cities do their fair share. So with that, I've actually, in the staff report, there's actually a series of different laws that have been included. But I've cherry picked five that are going to have some of the most direct impact to Clayton. And the first one being AB 626, micro home, micro enterprise home kitchens. So this establishes a new category of retail food facility, which are to be operated by a resident in a private home. However, this is an opt-in program. So cities and counties can choose whether or not they want to allow this to occur in their jurisdictions. Individuals are allowed to sell up to $50,000 per year in gross annual sales, or 30 individual meals per day, and no more than 60 individual meals per week. The home operation must be inspected and registered with the local health department. The latest update we've received is that the county board of supervisors, since they're in charge of the inspection of food facilities, is not supportive of allowing these types of facilities in unincorporated county thereby. So if the city wanted to elect to go down this path of allowing these within the city, the city would have to establish some type of MOU with the county for inspection because they're not going to establish their own program. That's not to say that it's always going to be this way. There, San Francisco and Oakland and some of the larger jurisdictions are actually rolling out these programs this year. So the county may be under political pressure eventually to allow these types of businesses to occur. So more to come on this one. Supportive Housing, which is AB 2162, this requires that supportive housing be a by-right in zones where multifamily and mixed uses are permitted. And supportive housing is defined by housing with no limit on length of stay that is occupied by the target population and that is linked to onsite or offsite services that assist the supportive housing resident in retaining the housing, improving his or her health status, and maximizing his or her ability to live and, when possible, work in the community. And the target population is defined as persons, including persons with disabilities and families who are homeless. And further, there was already a similar legislation on the books for supportive housing, and Clayton has actually taken, through its implementation of its housing element, taken certain steps to already allow supportive housing by right, just given how the zoning code is set up, because housing is already permitted by right, and state law requires supportive housing to be treated how other housing types are already treated in the city. However, they have gone further, such as the local governments are prohibited from requiring onsite parking if the project is within one-half mile of a public transit stop.
Does the current by-right supportive housing has a person cap on it, right? On the by-right? Like, it's only by right up to a certain number, as it currently stands, I thought?
I don't believe so.
Like, if it's, if I remember, it was like six or seven?
No, you're talking. I think he's talking about... Go ahead.
Yeah, you're... Basically, there are certain facilities that the state does license, and those are facilities up to six individuals, but this is a broader umbrella of supportive housing. It's not, these are not licensed by the state of California.
So is this target population, is this for example, or is this inclusive?
This is the state definition.
So this is persons, including persons, and these, but persons is pretty much everyone?
Correct.
So that's anyone? So the target population is anyone?
With disabilities and families who are homeless.
It says including people with disabilities and families who are homeless, but that also means everyone else, too, in the first clause of persons, right? I mean, that's how I'm reading it. It's like people, including people that have these characteristics, but also these first people?
It's a snapshot from the, I believe, the law, so it's really the persons with disabilities and families that are considered to be homeless.
Would that include, like, the parolees that we've been talking about?
It could.
Sweet. All right.
AB 2923, known as the BART bill. So this bill granted BART, the Land Use Authority, over BART-owned land within one-half mile of an existing or planned BART station. And where zoning is inconsistent with the BART TOD, or Transit-Oriented Development zoning, a local jurisdiction shall adopt a local zoning ordinance conforming to the BART TOD zoning standards within two years. And this sun sets on January 1st, 2029. While this does not have a direct impact on the city of Clayton, it shows that the state of California is starting to remove local land use authority from jurisdictions.
And I think the impact of that actually is if BART starts removing all parking lots, and our residents are not living next to BART station, but they are already parking next to BART station, so...
Correct. It could create...
There's an indirect impact, potentially, to us.
More commute issues. So SB 765 was kind of a cleanup bill and modified SB 35, which established a streamlined and SEQA-free process, or it eliminated the review Environmental California Quality Act, essentially for the approval of certain qualifying multifamily developments. In order for a project to qualify for SB 35 streamlined processing, it must not include a subdivision subject to the MAP Act unless it will receive low-income tax credits or is subject to prevailing wage and skilled, trained workforce requirements. So this bill modified SB 35 to include that where qualifying projects comply with objective standards and either receive low-income tax credits or are subject to prevailing wage and skilled and trained workforce requirements, the project's subdivision approval shall be exempt from going through the SEQA process. And it also shortened the timeframes for processing, so the city has 90 days to review projects that include 150 residential units or less, and 180-day review of projects over 150 residential units. This could directly affect Clayton if there's an application that's submitted that essentially meets the enumerated criteria that's highlighted in the law.
So, Mindy, on this one, it's not only just getting the tax credits. Anything that gets public dollars has to comply with prevailing wage, so then it's exempted.
Yes. Potentially.
Anything that gets public dollars in any form for a subsidy is exempted from...
Yeah. There were a lot of modifications for this particular one. It was hard to kind of condense it all in a presentation. So SB 946, sidewalk vending. This bill essentially decriminalizes sidewalk vending and establishes various requirements for local regulations, which has to be in accordance with the bill. Cities cannot restrict the location of a licensed sidewalk vendor unless it meets objective health, safety, or welfare concerns. A city cannot place a prohibition prohibiting vendors from selling food or merchandise in a public park. It cannot prevent sidewalk vendors in residential neighborhoods or in front of businesses. And it can prohibit it, but it can prohibit it within the vicinity of a certified farmer's market or in areas designated for a temporary special permit. So...
So, for instance, for the concerts, we could prohibit them.
Correct. Or, you know, Oktoberfest or any of the other big festivals that occur downtown, they can be prohibited. However, if it's just a typical day, you could have a vendor selling something in the Grove Park or Community Park at Little League. So there are a variety of different issues that come up from this particular bill. However, any food vendors are still required to receive clearance from environmental health. And those are kind of the highlights of affecting housing, land use, and planning. So if there's any other questions, otherwise, I'm going to hand it off to Janet.
Well, those were highlights.
And while she's doing that, again, I think this is useful, because, you know, particularly for having sidewalk vendors now suddenly starting to appear in parks and places where people have been used to thinking, no, you're not allowed in here, the public, it's going to be some adjustments in the public handed down by state legislation.
All right. Well, I'm going to talk to you guys about new laws affecting public employers and human resources. So the first one is SB 1343, which is sexual harassment training. So basically, to summarize, the Department of Fair Employment and Housing is required to create two online sexual harassment trainings this year by including at least one hour of sexual harassment training to non-supervisory positions by January 2020. This will include seasonal and temporary employees who are required to complete the training within 30 days of employment or 100 hours worked. Even if supervisory positions completed sexual harassment training in 2018, they will be required to take the two-hour training again, when available by the Department of Fair Employment and Housing. So very sorry about that, but we'll have to do it again later this year.
We're doing it tomorrow morning.
Yes, that one, I don't know if it's going to have all of the new requirements of the Department of Fair Employment and Housing.
It better have.
Oh, it better.
It should.
Where are we going at that time in the morning?
I took a two-hour training two months ago.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
I did it just last year. I'm very well-trained in harassment.
And the second item is AB 1619, which is Sexual Assault Statue of Limitation on Civil Actions. So what this item does is it extends the statute of limitation from two years to 10 years for sexual assault cases. The limitation is specific to sexual assault of attempted sexual assault after one's 18th birthday. This also includes if, after the occurrence, there is a discovery of an injury or illness that resulted from an act attempted or with the intent to commit an act of sexual assault, if it's found within three years after that attempt. And that is all I have for you. I'm going to pass that down to Elise.
I think you're on.
I'm on. Okay, there was two big changes that affect law enforcement. The first one was Senate Bill 1421, and basically, that bill amends Penal Code Section 832.7, and it is about the public having the right to know about all serious police misconduct, as well as officer-involved shootings and serious uses of force. So with this change, under the Public Records Act, anybody can get information about police officer personnel records or incident records related to the discharge of a firearm by a peace officer at a person, an incident involving use of force by a peace officer that results in death or great bodily injury, any record that's related to the sustained finding of an Internal Affairs investigation, which resulted, which was the allegation of sexual assault on a member of the public, and any record related to an incident which, for sustained findings made by a law enforcement agency, which resulted in dishonesty by a police officer. Up until this point, those records were not available to anybody other than the court through a pituitous motion. So this is a big change for what's available to the public through the Public Records Act request. And just as a side note, every law enforcement agency in California was served a Public Records Act request from the ACLU and from a consolidated news group on January 1st. So the information's out there. The other change is in regards to video and audio recordings. So as of July 1st, all law enforcement agencies that have audio or video recordings of a critical incident can only withhold those for up to 45 days. And after that, you have, there are some extensions that can be made due to investigation, but they're very limited. So right now, we don't really have vehicle cameras that are working. I'm in the process of upgrading those, but when they go back online, it'll have an effect on those. We'll have to disclose those tapes.
Just a clarification, Chief. When you say the vehicle cameras, you're talking about the patrol vehicle?
The dash-mounted vehicle cameras.
Not the ones up at...
Yeah.
Okay. Just so good.
Which, for the record, are working beautifully, right?
Yes, they are.
Great.
I'm supposed to take the longest, I think.
Yeah.
All right. So I have, of the many laws that were going to be impacting governmental finance in an update that we received, I kind of summarized three in the presentation tonight. The first two are relatively basic, and then the third one is a little bit more exciting, with some opportunities and actually even threats to us. So the first one here is State Constitutional Amendment 9 and Senate Bill 558, which is for rain-water capture devices. And Proposition 72 was approved by the voters in June of 2018, and SB 558 enacted that effective January 1st, 2019. And ultimately, what this measure provides is a tax, property tax exemption for additions to a house for rain-water capture mechanism, as long as that went, was put into place on or after January 1st of 2019. Ultimately, what this means to the city fiscally is that those additional reassessments, which, under ordinary law, if a building permit were pulled on that addition, it would generally trigger some type of a reassessment of that property, not the entire house, but the value of the addition to that house. So a local agency could potentially see a benefit, as well as all the participating agencies in that tax jurisdiction. So there could be a potential loss of revenue from this. It just depends on the number of units that do actually implement this rain-water capture device. But overall, we're not exactly positive. Staff is not positive what the loss of revenue would be at this time. It's really designed to encourage water conservation, which is a great thing, and my first take on it is that the loss wouldn't be significant. It just depends on what the behavior of the residents was. The second one, the city has already implemented actions to address this. This is Assembly Bill 3002 for Disability Access. Ultimately, it was a state mandate effective January 1st, 2019, that required local jurisdictions to provide a notice to all businesses and community, pardon, commercial property owners within their jurisdiction on disability access requirements, as well as the California Access Specialist Program, or CASP, program. So it did result in us having to revise our operational procedures, take additional time to revise our website, as well as our procedures over the counter when issuing a building permit and a business license, but we have already implemented this. Everything is in effect at this point on our city's website and in operations, with the exception of we do have to, of course, update the notice with four additional languages that the state required. We have not complied with that yet, because the state has not issued those letters yet in the other languages, but we will comply with that as soon as it's published by the state. And this is one of those mandates, which is basically, just required additional staff time, but if we did not comply, there could be potential exposure.
Is this just a notice requirement, then?
It's just a notice, yeah. And the state did provide the notice as well, thank goodness.
So to the extent that someone's renewing, but they're not compliant, and we notice them, we've satisfied our obligation?
We've satisfied, exactly. The other side of that has already been implemented. It was a precursor to this, which is the CASP fee. Previously, several years ago, that was a $1 collection for every, either a business license issued or a building permit issued, and we opted to implement it using a business license process, which most cities did, and that was a $1 fee. Recently, that was actually increased to $4, I think, last year, January 1st, 2018. And we implemented that as well, in accordance with the state law. And that's a pass-through. We collect that $4 on every business license, and we have to turn around and remit it to the county. It basically enforces our building inspection program and the CASP program, and then the remainder of that goes to the state. And we keep a 25% fee on that. Probably amounts to $100 a year, so maybe $200. So the last one is the most exciting one, and that's ultimately two actions that are going to be effective this fiscal year, as well as in future years, and some are still undecided. The first is the U.S. Supreme Court decision with South Dakota versus Wayfair that occurred in, I believe, June of 2018. And what that, what the U.S. Supreme Court decided in that case was that a significant online presence was sufficient to be a nexus, so for use, sales and use tax implications. So it used to be the old rules that you had to have a brick-and-mortar shop within your jurisdiction to constitute a nexus, which would require you to collect sales or use tax on online transactions. But now with the U.S. Supreme Court decision, many states, including the state of California, directed by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, are implementing rules to follow this and are actually going to be enforcing it on April 1st. So this could actually have real positive implications for the city of Clayton, particularly because we don't have that many brick-and-mortar businesses that generate sales and use tax, or even opportunities to create more.
So all those great Amazon purchases are going to come back.
Yes, and I'll get to, the Amazon is kind of an interesting thing. So what the CDTFA, which is the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, did is, effective April 1st, 2019, they've determined that the nexus requirements are either one of two items, which is if sales, with online sales into California exceed $100,000, or online sales into California are equal to or in excess of 200 separate transactions. So the U.S. Supreme Court decision didn't identify quantitative criteria. They listed maybe some examples, and it was up to the states to kind of determine what that was. That could be challenged, of course, later on by stakeholders, but right now, the state of California is going to implement that effective in three months here.
Who do they pay?
They have to pay the CDTFA, which used to be the Board of Equalization. They enforce all of sales tax collections and distribution.
But then it goes rebates to the origin from the purchaser, right?
It's complicated.
Yeah. How do they distribute the money?
Yeah, and it's complicated, and it's still not fully decided yet. So the second one that's in relation to this is with SCA 20, which is State Constitutional Amendment 20, which our Senator Glazer, that represents our region, introduced to the state legislature in March of 2018. And ultimately, this was actually good for the city of Clayton as well, is it proposed to allocate local sales taxes derived online based on delivery point versus the point of sale. So this amendment was designed to go into effect January 1st of next year, so 2020, and would be phased in over a nine-year transitional period. So under the current model, big, large entities like Amazon and even Nordstrom's, that has a big online presence, they, the state of California has determined that they have a significant nexus if they have fulfillment centers. So Amazon has fulfillment centers located throughout the nation, and the nearest one of which is in Tracy. So because they have a fulfillment center, even though their headquarters is located outside of California, they are required to collect a use and a sales tax on their transactions. And the way it works now is actually not in the favor of the city of Clayton and many other cities. It's actually distributed, the sales tax generated is distributed into a county pool. So if a city of Clayton resident orders something online, it goes into a county pool, and then the county will divvy that up on a periodic basis, based on our proportion of sales tax in the pool. So it's a dollar proportion, so, which is very bad, because we don't have very much sales tax to begin with. So even on a per capita allocation, if we did it based on population within the county, it would be over three times higher than what we get right now under the Amazon and Nordstrom fulfillment center model. So staff is going to be continuously closely monitoring SCA 20, because it's continuing to evolve. And as I said, the best outcome would be a direct allocation based even on zip code. So if a resident ordered something online, it would be distributed directly to us, because it was delivered here. it would be distributed directly to us because it was delivered here, or still in the county pool with a different allocation base because the one that's done right now is currently a little bit unfair from our perspective, from this jurisdiction's perspective. So ultimately, this legislation is going to pit agencies against one another, and it's going to create winners and it's going to create losers. And we need to decide what side of the fence we're on, no similar than, no different than Prop 13 and the GANL that created winners and losers on who gets property taxes and how much. So we will be looking into these matters in the forthcoming months and potentially reaching out to other jurisdictions and specialists to see what our impacts will be. That was longer than I wanted to talk, and I'll hand it off to the next.
But it was exciting.
But my potential money, that's what we want. Now Laura's going to show us what it's going to cost us.
Oh, no, I'm going to show you all sorts of lots of fun things here with plants and trees and stormwater. So here we go. First off, one of the first bills that went into place January of this year was AB 1884. We've heard all about this, the ban, the single use of plastic straws. It's currently, it's not banned, but it's only upon request by the customer. The good news on this is the county environmental health department, I did confirm, is the enforcement agency. So they will be responsible for the violation enforcement action, and it is a violation on the third violation. So you get two warning notices and a fine. The bad news is it's more than likely CalRecycle's going to ask us to include information in our annual report that we put into them because this goes to waste reduction and recycling efforts, and they would want to know of all of the facilities in Clayton that are subject to this. Are they implementing it? Have there been any violations? And so I will need to coordinate with county health once a year to, at least at the initial onset, to receive this data. Next up, we have a new one that's AB 2178, limited charitable feeding operation. This will allow charitable organizations to provide food in an outdoor location for up to four hours a day, subject to approval by the local enforcement agency, which is your county health department. So this is an element that will now allow our public areas to be used for food giveaways for homeless and needy or any other charitable food for up to four hours a day. They have less health requirement programs to comply with, so is to encourage these activities in our state because not only is homelessness a problem, but also health, food insecurities, another issue the state was addressing with this bill. Next one is SEQA. One of the components that's been added into SEQA is cities will now be able to not only look at local impacts on a project, but also the overall region. Will it benefit from an aspect of the project or the state of California as a whole, even though there is a local impact? So this is getting, again, at the issue especially related for housing that even though that maybe impacts locally, it meets a state or regional-wide need for housing or maybe another project, especially when it came to sports facilities and other things. This was one of the aspects of some of those arenas and stadium projects as it's now become state law that's available for all development aspects. So this would be especially important for doing any findings of overriding considerations. A couple of vehicle recycling bills. One is on car battery vehicle recycling. So Tesla Priuses and the variety of other cars out there have these batteries. They have a fairly long life on them, but now the state's realizing that we have to place these batteries somewhere when they come to the end of their useful life. The state's developing a, establishing a committee that will create new programs, requirements and laws on how battery reuse and recycling programs will be established for the lithium ion vehicles' batteries. More than likely, it will result in some reporting requirements and programs, most likely at the point of takeback like you do with your tires and computers and things of that nature. We're hopeful that, because we have none of these facilities in our community, car repair facilities, we won't have to report on them because they're not in our community. Zero emission building, that was another one that they did, which is achieving a 40% reduction in greenhouse gases that are generated by residential and non-residential buildings by 2030. This would create new building code requirements and encourage retrofitting of existing housing as well to meet the needs. And we have a bunch of pharmaceutical and Sharpe waste recycling legislation matters that were taken up with SB 212. As you know, or you might have known, the city of Clayton, we are one of several areas in Contra Costa County that has a Sharps and pharmaceutical takeback in our second-floor buyer police department. This will now require the manufacturers and distributors of drugs and Sharps to establish a statewide program by 2021, and the manufacturers and distributors will have to fund that operational cost of the state for overseeing the project. However, there is a provision that allows the local governments to seek reimbursement from those funds for our local programs. The catch is we're not sure how this will all work out with the established local programs and the new manufacturing programs. If they place one, say, at Walgreens, the state may say that we have two that are too close together. Ours would no longer be eligible for funding or grants, and we would have to remove ours from the geographic area. We're not sure, there's all those rules that have to be looked at, but they're trying to have them dispersed geographically and not have duplication within geographic areas. So we have until, at least the good news, until probably 2021 to see how all this works out. And we will be monitoring this closely with the county, who's already put into place some programs here locally with our drug and manufacturing folks, CBS and Walgreens notably. Their program in the county of Contra Costa was established prior to April 18th, 2018. So under this bill, would be allowed to continue to operate in their, I think, 20 to 25 locations county-wide that are being established, that are just starting to roll out.
Yeah, because CVS is just announcing all of theirs.
Yes, and all the CVS. And so, again, we'll be continuing to monitoring that. Electric vehicle charging infrastructure. This is one that's trying to get to the issue of equal access between plug-in hybrid, slow trickle and fast trickle. And considerations are being made to disperse locations equitably to address disadvantaged community needs. And this is for certain types of charging stations that were purchased or obtained either by the state or through monies collected from ratepayers, i.e. PG&E grants or other sources of funds. So the other bill is related to dedicated time-of-use meters for homeowners association. If an individual in an HOA has a parking spot and they want to put in their own EV charger, they are permitted to do this by right as long as they pay for the installation and maintain liability coverage and provide the association with the insurance coverage as well. So this is to encourage what people can do in their own home or their own garage when you have an apartment complex or condominium. So those common areas can now have a charging station placed in the open, either for assigned spaces or for an open area. Say the HOA wants to put in one, and the HOA dues want to pay for the cost of that for their, maybe they decided to go all hybrid in their complex. But this is another option that's been put forward in legislation. On the sewer side, we have SB 1215, which goes after areas that are pretty much urbanized that have septic systems still. And we have some of those in our community, where we have sewer lines in the streets, but the homeowners have yet not had a need to install and connect to the sewer. This is allowing the state water board now to force the connection of these septic systems to sewer lines as the state will now, the water boards will have these new authorities to determine adequacy of the sewage treatment. And their adequacy is whether the system has a reasonable potential to cause a violation of water quality. And we all know that our aquifers all drain to our creeks here. We have a very established creek system with Donner Creek and Mount Diablo Creek. The state's already been having the county health department try to identify all the locations in the region and all the health department's territory area in Contra Costa, Alameda, and where those are that are currently on septic, and where is the sewer line locations. That's our first step of gathering information. So we expect either through our next MRP 3.0 or next stormwater discharge permit, they may put in regulations that would have us do some things along this line, or it could be put into the sanitary sewer master plan reports and updates to that, which is another document we have under their jurisdiction for having a sewer system in our community. The FCC, those were bills, both Assembly and Senate. So I do want to just highlight that there's also stuff that the cities have to respond to related to regulatory changes. And one is the Federal Communications FCC regarding telecommunication. They're very intent on getting 5G service rolled out nationwide. This is something of nationwide interest. Small cell sites are permitted as use of rightsway and on public property with prescribed maximums. And how much an agency can charge and collect for its public assets, the cities cannot deny the deployment of these electronic cellular transmission devices. And as federal law prohibits, the cities from considering health impacts when taking action on a wireless application if it meets the FCC radio frequency levels, which all of them do, whether it's Verizon or Nextel or any of the others. So basically, the cities have to permit these coming into their communities. We don't have a lot of regulatory oversight. We don't get a lot of funds out of them in terms of the use of our public properties for them, and we can't regulate the type of technology that they choose to use, whether it's 4G, 5G, or something else. So that's one that's coming forward. And we've also got accelerating wireless broadband deployment by removing barriers to infrastructure investment. And this was one to, again, force the 5G and the higher internet connectivity throughout America. And the FCC wants to remove barriers that inhibit the deployment of this infrastructure. So what it does is it limits the city's ability to look at aesthetics of these devices, of the antennas, how big they are, what color they are. We have a lot of limitations on what we can look at. It decreases how long we have to process an application. It's been, the shot clock got moved back to we have 60 days to 90 days to make a determination of approval or denial. So it's a very short timeframe, two months and three months. And there's a new standard for court review should there be a legal challenge that's very favorable to the wireless providers. The FCC order is scheduled to go into effect the end of this month. Lawsuits were filed, especially by local government agencies, to stay the FCC's order until we can get a lot of other issues resolved or to get it reheard in the lower courts. I just found out today from the BB&amp;K update that the stay was denied. The local agencies basically lost that round, and it's now going to remand back to the Ninth Circuit Court some additional details to be worked out. But in the meantime, there's both federal and state regulations we have to comply with. And should there be a conflict, the one that limits the local authorities the most will control. And that was a decision by the courts. And there is no more appeal after that. So we are done with that issue nationwide. So that's one that we are going to be working on. I know Mindy in community development will be working on regulations that to see what we can do around the issue of telecommunications and compliance with the law. So what are we really talking about? 5G is a lot of little antennas on all your lamp poles throughout your neighborhoods versus the big structures that we often see that cover a broader area. So these are decentralized devices, cell decentralifications, and you can see various iterations, whether they're on above-ground telephone poles or below-ground utility structures. So they are concerning to communities in terms of what aesthetics they have outside your front door. If you have a streetlight pole in your front yard or in your front of your home, we can't prohibit them from installing their utilities on our poles. So the Water Quality Board was busy this couple of years ago, and we have some new mandates sort of coming into place starting next year and rolling out for the next 25-plus years. And this is to green the gray infrastructures, they call us, which is to retrofit our existing developed drainage infrastructure to disconnect the drainage pipes that typically go underground and discharge in certain areas into our creeks in this community. We will now to drain them into bio swales or green planter areas and bio planters prior to going into the drainage ways. And this will, this requirement also includes the city to develop in this green infrastructure plan a horizon timeline on the types of projects that we could do to implement this requirement and the funding necessary, and then ultimately begin to set monies aside in the budget to build these things. So this will have a budgetary implication as we go forward in our community. And there are no revenue funds in which to set aside for this. Some of the ideas being talked about are being impact fees, new impact fees to developers, or charging new taxes to the community as a whole. Some of those need approvals by the voters. Others may get pushed back from the developers because the more impact fees you put on a project, the more the affordability gap gets to be when we have a housing crisis. So we have some competing issues between state regulatory, board actions, federal actions, and legislation. One thing accomplishes one objective, and it may push on another objective. The last thing I want to touch about is on CalRecycle, which is the Division of State Recycling. We have some new requirements that we'll start to implement in 2020. One is the green waste that we collect curbside. We'll now need to go to composting facilities, and there may be an added cost in directing it to compost facilities that are located further away from us geographically. Businesses and residential organics collection program, which would be food waste. And for certain businesses, they will need to do food waste reuse and composting. There needs to be a separate textile or clothing collection program. We're not sure what the state means by that yet. They're still developing the programs. Our understanding is they need curbside, and that would be maybe another toter you would have to have at your curb to put your used and discarded clothing in. Businesses and residential organics collection program I mentioned. And then another program that they're requiring is an edible food recovery program. And maybe you might have heard of White Pony Express. They take back uneaten items from certain food retailers or restaurants, certain assembly hall events and banquets, and they will then redeploy those food items to homeless shelters or other places. This is going to be a statewide program that all cities will need to participate in and all businesses of whatever meets the threshold requirement. We will need to report on those and monitor those to make sure the businesses have signed up for the program, are complying with the program. And the state will be the entity, we believe, that will have the business sign up on their roster, but then we will need to monitor it locally. The state will also be working on determining the new colors for all of our recycling toters and the labeling that will go on them and what languages the labels will need to be placed in. And that will be starting to be implemented in 2022 to 2030. So our waste haulers will be, the idea behind this is to standardize the colors of toters, the carts, throughout the state of California. So whatever city you're in, you know that that particular color blue goes for this, the yellow goes for this, the green goes for that, and the brown goes for the other thing. Or in this case, it's going to be black, it's going to be trash. And then it will also have, we have new regulations for additional local outreach, which is community education materials that we have to mail, put on our website. We have to now conduct quarterly inspections and random inspections of businesses and residences and do dumpster diving to make sure and see how effective community residents are recycling. And also look at the contamination within the recycling cart or the trash cart. Are they throwing away recycling in the trash cart? Are they putting recycling into the, the opposite way? Anyway, we will need to do that on a quarterly basis. Right now, it's kind of randomly done every couple of years by our waste hauler. It will need to be done on a more frequent basis, and more people will need to be in the pool that we will have to go out and look at instead of randomly doing 25 or 50 homes in town. It may be 200 homes that we would have to randomly investigate. And what that means is we go out there early in the morning before the trash truck comes by, we look in the trash cart and we see, how did they do? Did they put recycling in their trash cart? Look in the recycling toter, is there trash in the recycling toter? And we have to report and document that to the state, and that is a mandate. And that's part of the reporting requirement.
I don't want to be on that subcommittee.
I'm wondering too.
Not on that subcommittee, no, no.
Anybody want to volunteer for that job? No, okay.
While Scott's coming up, our city engineer, we just wanted to acknowledge the council's indulgence in letting us, you know, go through these state laws. But we think it's important for two purposes. Number one, this is indicated in the staff report. A lot of this will dictate and drive much of what staff will be working on during the coming year. And so I wanted to alert you of that. And then secondly, of importance, we put this on the agenda so we could determine the tolerance of the planning commission candidates, each of their abilities to stay awake at late-night meetings, and they all are. Thank you, Scott.
So I'll be very brief. Thankfully, this is the best part of being an engineer. They don't legislate us a whole lot, so it's, we can get in and get out. Three real bills that affected the MAP Act. Mindy already addressed 765 from the planning aspect, so there's no new information from that. The next is SB 1260. This is, impacts some of the planning and entitlements that are affected by high fire areas. We don't have a high fire area in town, but we back up to a state park, which is a state fire area, and we have open space, which is grassland. And grassland is one of the items that's going to require some additional findings and some more intensified planning when we go through an entitlement process. You're going to be involved with the state forest, the State Board of Forestry and Fire Protection and their requirements in adopting those in certain circumstances where we have interfaced with a grassland or such of that. Probably be very limited impact for us, you know, although it, you know, very important. Probably be very limited impact for us, you know, although it, you know, very important. The last item that I had, which I put on here, it's AB 2973. It, quite honestly, does not impact us at all, but it's a little bit provocative to some developers because it offers the potential for the extension of the life of a tentative map. During the downturn, there were automatic extensions that were offered by the legislature, and those have started to taper off and have more and more requirements addressed to them. But the developers are very interested in that because that's just two more years of life on their existing planning. This bill is a follow-on to one two years ago, and the one that was followed... That this follows on, I'm sorry, the one this follows established that the eligibility for MAP, potential MAP extension was limited to a number of very rural counties. So where this will sound great and possibly, you know, oh, we're going to have another two years, it does not impact or does not meet Contra Costa County, we are not eligible for it. So if this comes up, it's really, it's a non-issue, just disregard it, or you can educate the person to the fact that it does not pertain to Contra Costa. And that's it for me, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you very much. It's very informative and very helpful in understanding what keeps staff busy, but also when we get a piece of legislation in front of us, it's not coming out of vacuum, it's coming in front of us for a reason. Okay? So let's move on to next item, which is Item 10D, which is the council discussion and determination and then appointment of a planning commissioner for the one vacated term. So the way in which this will work, we have five candidates whom we interviewed earlier today. We don't need motions, but we will need a nomination, which does not need a second. But we will take nominations from the council members. If we have more than one nomination, then we will vote on those. And any nomination that gets three votes will automatically stop the process at that point. So with that, and once we have nominations, I think it would be prudent for also anybody who makes a nomination to perhaps advocate or explain why they want to make that nomination. So with that...
I'm ready.
Go ahead.
First of all, I want to thank the applicants that came out tonight for the opening on the planning commission. Most of us on the council here have been through that planning commission, and it's a very important part of the entire city operation and city family. So it's a valuable experience and a very important one. And it's an asset to the city council. We had five exceptional candidates. They all had extremely well-founded backgrounds, not only from education, but experience in their... In their own various disciplines. And I'm going to speak first and make my own recommendation, which I leave open then to the other councils to chime in. But my single top candidate for the position, who would bring in not only well-experienced activities with both the planning commission and the city council, and having attended an extremely high number of meetings over the past year, and participated at most all of the council meetings, and I think would bring a good point of view to the city council through the planning commission, I would like to recommend Frank Gavidia for that spot.
Okay, so we have one nomination by Councilmember Diaz for Mr. Gavidia. Are there any other nominations?
I would also like to comment. I think that... I think that the background that Frank brings to the table is different than the background that some of the other candidates brought, as well as different from the background of the existing members. And I think that different point of view, that analytical point of view, is really important in that role. I think the... There's a demonstrated clear commitment to the city and a knowledge of the process that is very valuable. You know, I think at the end, when we talked about geographic diversity and where the people are, it is one of the key guidelines of how we... Our selection criteria, and that does stand out there. On one of the questions that we asked was about the principles being applied when you're making decision-making. And I think only two of the candidates, and Frank was one of them, their first response was in accordance with the law. And I think that is really important when we're talking about the planning commission, that they have to operate within the confines of those guidelines. And so, yeah, so I do want to thank the rest of the candidates, but I would advocate for Frank.
Okay, and we don't need a... We don't need a second, and since there's already one nomination for Mr. Gavidia, we don't need a second nomination for that either. So is there any other nominations?
I actually wanted to express support for two of the candidates, and I'm a little torn on them as well. And I appreciate the comments that have been made already. I think several of them made really good points throughout their interviews. But... And I will say, I don't know either of these folks well personally. One, I didn't know until I saw him here tonight. James Porter, I was very impressed with his presentation. He is an attorney. One of his answers was, go by the general plan, the visions, look at the legal issue, all of the rules. The other one was Karen Amos, who answered very similarly to that same question that you just referred to. You know, we have... We have plans in place already today and to use those as guidelines. But I think both of them demonstrated a willingness to be open to all who were before them. And I frankly would be happy with either of them.
So I'll just add a comment to... I actually was very similarly impressed by two candidates. And from my perspective, I'm kind of torn between two. I too had not met Mr. Porter before, and I was actually very impressed by his approach, his just overall answers that he provided. I do know of Ms. Amos in the community. In fact, my kid was at one point in her soccer team many, many years ago. But I was similarly impressed by her approach. And I think one of the things I'm definitely looking for is people who are open-minded, who are, you know, understand sort of the process that the planning commissions go through. So I'm sort of definitely in between those two candidates where I'm standing, but I'll let Commissioner Wolf...
Well, I think we should just have all five of them and then rotate them through. I think they all did extremely well. And I was impressed by Terry and her background and her people skills. And my concern there, of course, would be the lack of... Excuse me, length of time that she's been here and the time, whether or not you're going to stay in Clayton. I would... But I do... I'm very impressed by her. I was also... I was also impressed by Frank and by James. But, I mean, everybody did an excellent job with their presentation, I think. But the standouts for me would be Frank and James. Suddenly got quiet.
Okay. So then, do we have... Do you have any other nominations that anybody would like to make? I'm hearing a little bit of variation among us, I think.
Love to see some diversity.
Well, we have two with three votes.
We do.
Yeah. So...
Potentially.
They could arm wrestle for it.
This is a nice problem to have, I guess, you know, in a sense that we have a lot of good candidates. I, from between the two candidates, I guess, that have three votes, I would certainly advocate for Mr. Porter if it came down to that.
Let me ask a question of Malo. The... We talked about the geographical. Well, Frank lives in the downtown area, and there's a lot of things going to happen in the downtown area. What is the circle that you'd have to recuse yourself from voting? How does that work?
It's a 500-foot circle. And then in addition, if there would be any impacts on your property, even if it exceeded the 500-feet circle, you may have to recuse yourself. And the 500 feet is as the crow flies.
Okay. So that would be a concern rather than a benefit.
I think we're outside of that. Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, just given... Given the magnitude of participation in the community and with the existing, the... All the meetings attended, the knowledge, the commitment to the city and being dedicated in that way, I think that goes a long way to support Frank's candidacy. Is that the right word? Effort, bid, his bid. And so, you know, I think Mr. Porter presented very well. I mean, he's very polished. I think he interviews very well. I do think that I would give the leg up on Frank because of that demonstrated commitment to the city. And so I think that if I were to choose, well, if, you know, if you were to choose, then that, to me, speaks to... It goes a long way in making that evaluation.
The silence is deafening.
So, I mean, from my perspective, I don't think that just being involved in itself is the only criteria. I think there is... I think there are other factors. And like I said, I was very impressed by Mr. Porter. And, I mean, and I think he does bring a very valuable background to the... Would bring a very valuable background to the commission as well. We don't have any attorneys, whether that is a good or bad thing, but having an attorney is not necessarily...
Certainly.
It can be an asset. And he had also background in construction litigation, which could be extremely helpful on the commission. So I would...
Yeah, I mean, the attendance isn't the only factor. I think it is a factor. The different background, I mean, we don't... You're right, we don't... I don't think there are other attorneys currently present on the planning commission. Is that right?
No.
No?
There are no...
But there's no one that has that... The finance economic background either. And that's always valuable. That'll be important in any... In all decision-making processes. And so, you know, I don't think that it's just the attendance, but given that, you know, Mr. Porter, he's recently got... I think he's changed jobs, changed employers recently. He was for Robert Half now, according to the application. And, you know, he's, you know, he's come in to make a difference in this community. I do think that of the responses that we got, his were more tepid in that they were... He was less comfortable in staking a position, and I think it's important to be able to do that. He spoke clearly, but it wasn't... I didn't... I felt like he, when he responded, they were less definitive and they were more boilerplate responses. I mean, I could have given that interview as well.
I don't know if I heard that. And I think there's a value in the planning commission into being, going in open-minded, being able to take in all the information that's available and to be able to make a decision based on that information as opposed to any other bias you might have. And there's also an ability... You know, we've had a number of contentious issues even at the planning commission recently, which have really require quite a bit of diplomacy as well.
Certainly.
Anyway, that's my two cents.
Yeah, and I don't think that that's lacking in any way from the other candidate either. So, I mean, it's not like that that's... That aspect is missing or that quality is missing. I think, you know, we... The fact that we have had disagreement and yet we're still able to be, you know, civil and engaged, I mean, it's... You see the... You see the performance in an environment that has had that potential conflict. And I don't think that it's been exacerbated. I think it's been diffused. And so I think that's a demonstrated... It's a demonstration of those qualities that you're talking about.
I think you're more confident of that than I am.
Certainly.
I agree with Tuya. I think James brings a calmer, perhaps more patient perspective. And certainly, the professional background, I think, is helpful as well in that the planning commission isn't as concerned with finance as they are with building things and with that perspective. So, I mean, we may be at an impasse here, but it may be a matter of...
What do you think? My belief is that a valuable part of being on any of these positions is having a connection or ear to the entire community. And based upon recent history, it's my humble opinion that somehow we didn't hear from a growing constituency out there. And I believe that Frank could bring that, open up that channel of communication to help understand the issues that we're ultimately going to face in the next few years. So I... Although I think Mr. Porter has a fine background, even though he went to UCLA, and I think he could offer a good perspective. If he were open, there are positions on the Trees and Landscape Committee that could also use his expertise. So, I mean, so there's not... We don't... We're not closing the door, so...
And there will be three spots in six months.
I mean...
There will be other spots opening up in just a few months.
Oh, yeah, exactly. Exactly.
So you think it comes down to you, but I will make the second nomination for Mr. Porter. And I do think that there's an... There's an aspect of sort of neutrality in here, too, that is, would be helpful at the commission. So I will... I would strongly advocate for Mr. Porter.
Okay, well, I guess it comes down to me. Having been on the commission and knowing the guys that are there, I think it's going to come down to some blending of synergy. And they are a diverse group, and I think adding either one of these guys would make it more diverse. But I'm willing to go and advocate for Frank at this point.
So if we could, a motion to adopt the resolution appointing, you know, Frank or whoever, that would be in order at this point in time.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to nominate Frank Gavidia for the open...
Actually, to appoint?
To appoint, I'm sorry. To appoint Frank Gavidia to the open remaining planning commission term. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, say no. I will oppose.
So four to one?
Yep.
Congratulations.
Okay, sure, go ahead.
Now I talk like a Marine. Thank you, I will not let you down. Marines never let anyone down.
I hope so, thank you. Great, thank you. Then I think the next item is 10E, which is the city council to discuss, to essentially define a date, time, and location for the city council's annual goals and objectives session with the city manager. Mr. Nepper.
I won't belabor this, we meet annually. You select a date and time and location. Depending upon your calendars, there is a fifth Tuesday of this month. That might be ideal, otherwise we're open to your collective determination of when is a convenient time and location. Normally it's been done in the third-floor conference room, but if you expect there might be additional people to attend, maybe that's too small a facility. So I'll toss it back to you, Mayor.
What time?
It's been at various times, and that's one of the decisions you must make. You're not restricted to start at 7 o'clock, because this will be a special meeting.
And Tuya's coming from the city, so before 6:00 is almost impossible for her anyway, Without taking time off work, anyway. What about the fifth Tuesday? That gives us a little bit more time than it does before a council meeting.
Jan. 29?
Yeah.
So January 29th. That day would work for me, at least, anybody else?
And what time is best for you to get home, Tuya?
I could do 5:00, 5:30, whatever, but is it?
What about you, Jim?
Works, works. That's fine, too. 5:30, 5:30 is better.
5:30, yeah.
Jim? Does that work for you?
What day? I missed it.
Sorry, Tuesday, January 29th, at 5:30?
Yeah, that's fine.
That work for you, Mr. City Manager? You suggested the fifth Tuesday.
It's just, yeah, certainly, off the check.
So what, 5:30 to 7:00 maybe? We don't generally go too long.
Yeah, I don't think we put a back end on it.
We don't generally, but if we ballpark it so that people know.
What's been the past practice of how the, the length of time the session takes?
Usually about an hour and a half.
Is it here?
No.
We've had it at the third-floor conference room, but if we, if you expect that more people might be attending, then you could have.
Because it's still a public meeting, right?
It is still a public meeting.
But there's room there for a few more, and we can always open the doors and bring in a couple of extra chairs, it's just.
Cool.
I think that's a good location.
It's a little more informal.
Yeah.
What's the actual title of the meeting?
Goal-setting session.
Goal-setting, okay.
So it sounds like then a motion to call a special meeting for a goal-setting session, Tuesday, January 29th at 5:30 PM in the third-floor conference room of City Hall.
So moved.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And none opposed, so it passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. So then, item 11, are there any requests for future items or meetings?
Yes, I have one, and that would be at some point in February or March to schedule, and they have opened prior to the city council meeting, so not to detract from any, our agenda, but the realignment and justice group would like to come and address the entire council on the whole realignment and justice issue, also known as parolee housing.
Would, is that the time that we'd be prepared to talk about the item again, as you had indicated on the agenda previously?
I, I.
It'd be nice to have those on the same day.
Yeah, I know, I want all of you to get the benefit of what I got and hear more about this. It's, it's a very complex issue, and one thing we didn't realize is that has been in effect since 2011, and.
Yeah, I mean, we've.
It's, and it was like a, you know, you know, blast it from the side when we got hit with it.
Yeah, because it would be.
So the question is, you want to put it on the agenda, and it would, they, they would say, they would like to have it before the city council meeting, open to the public or whatever, unless you want to have it as a city council meeting. They think they can do it in 15 minutes.
So you're looking at informational presentation, go ahead, Mr. Nepper.
Just a thought, and I don't know how it plays in the councilmember Diaz, but what you could do is put it on a, one of your regular meetings, have them come under presentations for 15 minutes, and then, you know, we're still have lingering out there a revisitation of the parolee housing ordinance, would you want to then discuss that, you know, further on the agenda that evening, or a different time?
No, I, different, I would suggest a different time.
Really? I would say that those should be on the same time.
It is, it's too complex, and there's so many facets to it.
Well, if they can make a presentation in 15 minutes, I think we ought to talk about it that same night while it's all fresh, seems to me. I mean, if we're going to talk about it again, let's do it when we're.
At the same time, if we're going to revisit it, then, which I think we should, then let's kill it at once.
Well, are we revisiting it, or is this bringing it back on the agenda, is that just?
Bringing it back on the agenda, revisiting.
But isn't it a presentation, whether it's by you or you, as to whether to actually readdress it?
Well, we actually have already, and councilmember Diaz was kind enough to give us a, a letter, you know, indicating what points he wished to have discussed. That's sufficient to open up the dialogue on those points, if you wish to do that.
Did you give that to them, or did you give that to us?
He gave that to.
I gave it to the mayor when he was in, in the office. What I asked for is to revisit the park, private park issue. How, how would you go, how would we go about addressing that, amending it that specifically? That's, that was the whole thrust of it.
Okay.
Because that's the most critical issue that keeps reoccurring.
I have some other things as well to tack on to that, too, so it could probably be going at the same time. I mean, I think it makes sense to do it at the same time.
Well, my recollection, and councilmember Diaz, correct me if I'm wrong, but your letter included.
Included, yeah, the park and looking at expanding the.
And then an outreach.
Right, right, right. Oh, the outreach, yes. And that's another thing that the realignment group has offered to do, they will, because my goal was, at some point in time, to have two community outreach meetings, one for Shell Lane and one for.
Coyote?
No, 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 Coyote, but up in Keller Ranch, and, and they offered to assist in that and be a participant in that to answer questions, because it's still, I think there's a lot of, not, not full knowledge of our, the two groups that are affected on what this all means.
Yeah, I just think, you know, staff needs to know if, if you pick the meeting, it's either, what, February 5th, is it, or?
No, no, I would put it beyond that. I would, I'd put it beyond the February 5th meeting, and you also have the option of, if they're, depending upon the agendas, March.
Okay, but it would seem to me that if we have that presentation, since, you know, I kind of subscribe to the idea, then it becomes fresh for dialogue, we, we put your item there and under action items for discussion, and then if councilmember Juan has other aspects he wishes to introduce at that time, he can do so, because that really is for the council to discuss, and then you give staff direction if you're interested in making amendments to the ordinance. That's the process.
That's, yep, in a nutshell.
So do we need a date for that, then?
Yeah, I guess I'll, you know, I'll just wait to, you know, do you have a date?
Well, you tell me what date you think would be the best one, and I'll inform them.
You know, second meeting in February or the first in March?
I'll do that, I'll give them both options, and I'll let you know.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, any other?
I'd like to introduce a relook at the existing sign ordinance that we had talked about. Is that already on the?
Just let you know it's coming to you, we're, we've already worked on that, and we're bringing, because we kind of initiated that one.
Yeah.
Because I.
Do you have a date?
I think it's coming to the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
You have a calendar now?
February 5th?
It's the 5th?
That's the 5th.
Okay.
And are we, are we looking at the roundup issue?
That's probably, that's coming on the 5th as well, so.
It's coming on the 5th.
Right?
The what?
The roundup.
The roundup is also coming on the 5th, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah.
That's why I was indicating councilmember Diaz push the other item back to the second meeting in March or the first.
So that'd be better?
Second meeting in February.
In February, excuse me. You better, Mr. Diaz, do you feel better?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
19th of February or 3 of March, I mean, 5 of March.
When, when do we know, whenever they get back to you?
Yeah, I'll, I'll call them tomorrow.
Cool. All right.
They're, they were waiting for feedback from me to find out what would be the date, preferable.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, so with that, unless there's anything else, we move on to closed session, we do not have any, so we are adjourned until February 5th, 2019.
Great, now I'm onto Sacramento.